I'm on your side when it comes to that. I'm on your side and I hope you understand that. I understand regulations, the facts are in my business is where I run across from uh, I guess Mr. Burks, Peter Burks, that's where I had to go to New York for a couple of years. That's regulated it, regulating it in that aspect wouldn't allow me to have it at all. I'm in the least there. I do understand regulations, I believe if you were, that we have a square here now as residential area, to my knowledge, so we wouldn't just be popping one up and just crossing the school. Not popping one up, uh, crossing the church in Greenwood is impossible. Like was spoke last time, churches are goddamn throughout Greenwood and as a Christian man that makes me happy and I don't want to go nowhere. We're, like I said last time, we are a faith driven community and we will continue to be so. I believe Greenwood sets the standard in a lot of ways and we have the opportunity to set the standard in this aspect. I believe that the state probably has done a little bit of a, I don't know what you'd call it, but they have passed a buck those way, to me would be limit the amount of application coming, limit the amount of applications coming before their board, so instead of time of their board, their time of your board.
Here's the bottom line, only thing the city can do is set the tax money with the resolution we're always talking about, we can throw some, uh, regulations on some zoning, but the state and the gentleman back there for Friday is gonna tell you that ABC will crawl up and down you every time you go in the bathroom to wash your hands. So, what, there's not really much the city can do to regulate this apart and regulate it. The part about sharing a private club with the church, the grounds lady draw from that, I mean, that's just by the laws, but I don't know where he brought that from.
And my establishment don't have.
There's no regulation on.
There is actually.
No, there is not. As for Michael Harry at ABC, there is on liquor stores, there's more on where I want it, but as far as private clubs, there is no regulation.
And that's the key word, private clubs, of course, is the towns where it's, you know, liquor, uh, you know, hot or whatever.
He said that's entirely up to the municipal body.
And in my application, there's not even a, I don't have a bar. Like, you're not, you, Bob and Joe, you're not gonna get up on the bar and order a Bud Light with my Steve behind you. There's no bar and I don't want one there. I don't want, I don't want that in my community. But I do understand the option of having a Bud Light with your gang or whatever your drink is, but I don't want, my, my 11-year-old, it's bad enough I gotta walk into the restaurant smoke fence to teach that brother. Uh, I can walk into restaurants and if I come in there at nine o'clock at night and we've had a ball game and I see 10 people slopped up on the bar and I gotta put my kid over the side like this because I don't want to hear the F-bomb and then this comes out these people's mouth. I don't want that in my community, brother. And I don't think you do either, but the facts are, is we don't. If we don't do it this way, Rod, they're gonna vote it in. Rod, they're gonna have a liquor store. Rod, they're gonna bring a bar here. Rod, we don't want that. I don't want that, you don't want that, and our register Dr. Burgess doesn't have that. We want to regulate this the best way possible and that's why I say set the standard for the whole state of Arkansas. Set the standard.
Can we ask?
You be the man that, that, that trailblazes this, you be the man known, Rod Powell known, that set the standard. Let your legacy continue forever, that set the standard.
Mr. Novs, can we ask, if the council's okay with this, can we ask Mr. Novs to bring forward a business paper? And I know there's some information in your application.
That's everything in that that you could ask for.
Is it all in there?
That's all, that's everything, and ask for details, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, guys.
Is it in the application, is that what you're looking at?
It's in the application, it's pretty cut and dry.
Okay. And I, and I'm not trying to intervene in what the process needs to be, council, this is council decision, may, it's council meeting, I just get, I just get the, the, okay. So, how do you want to move?
Here, Rod, we'll do this deal.
Okay.
This thing is showing emergency clause, which obviously is wrong, we'll take that out.
Yeah, I don't know, did you ask for that or?
I did, but listen, Mr. Powell.
Well, I understand why you did, but that's fine.
I'm proud to kick that stuff right out, I mean, I heard it.
But I 100% agree with Rod that we need to have a plan and that, I don't know, I can't believe we're already more on there, but to get a plan set and all that stuff, because that's what the whole thing is about, the money for me, because I love money, it's just the city agreement making money. And so, uh, that I'd like to see, 100% of the parks, we'll all even think about voting for that, so you may not get any kind of license, but we'll, we'll negotiate on that deal as we go through, but I would like to put it on the first reading and get this thing in motion, we can turn it down and throw it out next month or the third month, we can back in here and Rod's plan, he has it set up and we get all the zoning and the regulations and all that, but let's get the ball rolling and this is October, or whatever, the December reading, we can come in and vote this thing down and everybody comes Merry Christmas, whatever. But I'm looking on first reading, by title only. Yes.
I'm being, I'm being good.
Oh, yeah, bigger, go, go, go. What's right, you know, emergency clause.
Have a motion?
Okay.
And a second.
And I'll, uh, and I'm fine with, you know, having a first reading too, you know, that's why I'm saying we got three readings to really thoroughly discuss this, uh, but also, I would like to also work with Rod, you know, and obtain a resolution again, because I think we do need to have a resolution decided, set forth of, of something for, for not only just your novels, but any other business that's, uh, going to be, you know, alcohol related.
We need to have all those study sessions. We don't need to have study sessions. If y'all want me to bring a plan, I'll bring a plan, but until then, I want everything in place, so I'm out until everything's in place. I want, I want the sales tax in place, I want the plan in place, until then I'm out. You missed putting it on for the first reading and you can fix all that, come to all that plan, you got three months, Rod, three months to make that plan.
Sounds good.
And then, I just want you to use caution on that, all the money going to the parks. I think it's appropriate, I think it's appropriate that, that the parks, I, I think it's appropriate that establishments that are selling alcohol, that the money goes to youth activities. Electric central services. I, I'm fine with the way Greenwood is. I'm just, I'm just asking you though, I mean, because when I first downed, does somebody reach to me? And I think our essential services are, are in pretty good shape, I'm just saying, just. We, we've got the best fire department in the state of Arkansas, we've got the largest volunteer fire department in the state of Arkansas that's got an ISO 3 and can, and is real close to an ISO 2, we've got the finest fire department in the state of Arkansas, we've got the finest police department in the state of Arkansas, we're even the first and the second, most safe, safest city in the state of Arkansas. These are things that we should pat ourselves on the back with. We have an excellent arc system, we, the only thing that we're, we have a good water system, we've got, the fire chief is, uh, the fire chief is, is the president of Fire Chief Association of the state of Arkansas. Our water department is now being elected to the president of the Arkansas Rural Water Chief Association, we've got a fine water, we've got fine sewer, these are essential services, we're doing a great job, with the exception of the North State Highway that goes through the middle of town. That is a struggle, that's gonna be a struggle with or without that money going to youth activities. But probably look forward, I want to make sure that the sales tax is in place and that money is targeted and, and going towards youth activities.
Can you not decide that at a later date? I mean, where it's going, I mean, and I'll just throw in senior adults, and I agree with everything you just said, we got, we got the best of all, we've got, we've got a senior safety center that could use some assistance and, and I'm a youth guy, by the way, I ran the club out there.
Like I said, I want this all in place.
It's not a right club, it's a.
Before I consider anything else. Sorry. But y'all, you got your guns.
You only have your guns to vote on the resolution?
I mean, it ain't happening tonight, the other three months, it's not today.
Ultimately, I'll just start talking about that.
I'll bring it back next month and y'all can start taking a look at it and start launching errors.
You have a motion to second. Call for a vote. You can discuss it, that's fine. I call for a vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. McDaniel?
Mayor and councilwoman make one call now.
Yes, sir.
As you, there's a lot of spirited debate about this and I won't take that any further, but as you well know, I'm serving the term of my great friend Trey. And when I committed to do that, I committed to follow his wishes to the best of my knowledge and I'm serving the trade of, of alcohol, of this.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Wes Terry?
Yes.
Motion thousand less. We don't have a majority, so. You call it, Mary.
I, I vote, uh, yes to put it on for first reading.
Great, Mayor, yes. Uh, motion has, an ordinance authorizing Joshua Novs to file application for private club permit pursuant to ACA 3-9, that due to, with the Alcohol Beverage Control Division and for other purposes. Is he on the majority? You have that for him? Yes, is there four now?
She's great.
Majority of the city council, six people.
And, and again, this is all about, and again, with bringing your plan and having that plan in motion, I mean, you're still gonna pursue that, correct?
I was, I, I still want a plan in place.
That's what I'm saying, you're, you're bringing back to the council.
And until that plan is in place, I'll continue to vote.
But, but, my question is, you're going to bring a plan to the council?
Somebody, somebody.
With a, with a resolution about the plan for business and plan for tax.
A plan on bringing a resolution on, on these type of businesses and a plan on bringing a ordinance that would require three readings.
Correct.
Uh, putting the tax in place by council vote for mixture and use tax and that'd be a.
Is that ordinance or residence?
It'll be, that'll be an ordinance, so that'll be three readings. And it'll refer to state legislation as, as I stated before. For that, I need help with Mike. Now, that may not happen in law.
3-9-205.
Yes, 3-9-205. Because, because we all know how Mike, how busy Mike is, so that may not be speed.
Correct. Uh, I feel the need a little bit to, I don't know why, I suppose, but we, I think we be up a little bit on tattoo folks tonight and they more near defending themselves and I don't, I don't think anybody meant anything particularly personal about that, but I do want to make a statement that obviously that the, that particular business or that type of business does not require, uh, state, it's not state mandated, it's not, there is no permit by the state to have a tattoo perlet within the city limits of any town, so, and again, I don't think anybody meant, means anything, I just want to make sure that we didn't pursue it that way because of the, no matter what our personal feelings, those two gentlemen certainly came to my office before they ever opened and visited with me, with me, and not that I'm anybody, but they wanted to know what the office of the mayor thought of such a business and I told them, good luck, we, we welcome you as a business to Greenwood, but be ready for opposition and I don't know how they're doing, I'm not stopped, I don't, I'm scared to death of being able to, I don't think I could get one. I just thought I'd say that about them. Sir? Or that too, yeah, absolutely. Sir? No, not that person, no.
Mayor, I was spoken, 3-9-223.
Okay.
That's what I'm gonna start with. Now, I, I'm, Mike is going to have to write, I, if I write it, it's gonna, it's not gonna work out, so.
And you're, you're talking on the tax issue?
On the tax issue, that's what would have to be in.
And then this one has dash two two two, so that is not correct, or is that a different?
That, that, uh, that regulates, regulates on premise consumption.
Okay. So the tax is three, two, three, or two, two, three, correct? What was your sound?
3-9-223.
On the tax.
That's what we're currently.
Correct. All right, any other, well, we voted against comments, we're gonna, we'll move on. Two, number, definitely, number one, number one. Two, and that'll be very well, next week's, technically is, number three, I don't know who it is.
You're on, you're on.
Oh, next mistake, like you said. Or waste water, Mr. Rattler, think.
Oh, we originally were to request a, uh, resolution for water storm, uh, but due to dryness and the issues with, uh, lack of moisture, we're gonna wait until January next year, so we're just gonna put this in our 2018 budget, because we've got to be able to monitor and read the flows that are, that are coming through the system to, to start that model, so you can delete that item from the.
Just delete it or hold our table?
No, delete it, because we'll build it into the 2018 budget, we'll do a 2018 budget field, approve the model.
Which, which I got word this morning from that gentleman right there that we're gonna be looking into budget stuff very, very soon. I'm not gonna make any predictions, not gonna make any predictions, but we got high hopes.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Okay, and, uh, today I was, a lady, oh, mine, mine, and, uh, she, she, she was complaining and I just did not have a good answer. She said she's got a baked house and, and this is Linda Sapp, 2704, in the water out, but she owns a lot of property in Greenwood. She said, you know, I, I understand, I had a, I, I use no water, and she said, I understand I had a $10.90 sanitation fee, she's Google that, that doesn't anything do with you, and she said, I understand I had a water fee of $7.75 for the meter fee. And I said, and I said, yeah, I understand that, and she said, she said, but then I have a $9.00 tax for sewer, uh, $9.00 fee for sewer, and she said, well, there's no water going through the house, there's not a meter set on sewer, why do you charge me $9.00 on sewer? I said, I really don't have a good answer, but it's just probably the minimum.
It is the minimum, but it sounds like, uh, it sounds like something we need to look at because sewer is based on the water consumption.
I'll just.
So.
I took a picture.
Go text that to you.
I'll, I'll send it to you right now.
I don't need a picture, just send me the info.
Oh, hey, thank you, picture.
Well, whatever, it's something else. And we'll look into it and see if there's actually a problem here and then we'll come back for discussion on the one that we need to do. I'm probably gonna have to do some historical research on that because there may be a minimum sanitary charge that we, that we're charging or having in charge, but you do have to recover your maintenance and upgrade costs and so forth and so on, so there could be a minimum cost in, I don't know.
And we all know Dr. Sapp, and she's usually just kinda okay with stuff, she just is very persuasive and she always just kinda wants to know. She hangs out with John's mom, so.
Right. So.
Thank you, Mr. Redd.
Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Almost got it.
How are we doing on this, the addition, the new addition and their water tower? Are they, is there been any change or they?
Yeah, they actually, um, we, we had a problem, there was a gentleman that worked for, his name's Dan, I don't know his last name, worked for, um, Jamesport, did our telemetry in the past, uh, so all of our telemetry knowledge went out the door and that was, that was also the person that the Phoenix Tank Company was using for the telemetry on the, on the new tank. So, we had to get a new company in here to do the telemetry, that has been done, um, they filled the tank last week and then we're flushing it on Thursday and Friday and they should be doing bacterial samples today, tomorrow, and then once those bacterial samples are done, the state, there's gonna be a punch list of bodies that we have to take care of. So that's, that's for the 200 dozen hour tank. As far as the Joneses and the construction of that tank, we have not received any specifications to date and I, and I mentioned that in the, you know, report.
Okay.
So did that cover all your needs, because I think I get two different spots here.
Yeah, thank you for that, sir.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Hold on. I don't think it's coming back. Mr. Happy is not here, ordinance assessing mileage tax, is there?
No one knows, no, I'm just kidding. This is what we do.
We've had her mask.
Yeah, every year, so if we want five mils coming our way on taxes, then we have to do this for the form of orders, so please be passing an emergency.
I think the motion we passed, ordinance assessing five mils by title.
I second it.
Motion is second, pass it, ordinance. By title only, sir.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Wes Terry?
Yes.
And unanimous, an ordinance assessing a 5.0-mill tax on real and personal property within corporate limits of the city of Greenwood, Arkansas for the year 2018 declaring emergency and for other purposes.
I'm gonna be, maybe the second, third reading.
Second.
Motion to waive, second, third reading.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
I didn't, for all of you out there, especially John May, this is not a new tax, we're just renewing. I just wanted to say myself, I'm.
I make a motion, we enact the emergency clause.
Second.
Motion is second to enact the emergency clause.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Wes Terry?
Yes.
Thank you. Five, that's four, five. Auction list approval, this is, uh, we had an auction a week ago, I think, and, uh, three weeks ago, downed price, a month ago, and, uh, it seemed that things were turning up, but we didn't quite get on the list, so we're ready to have another one, and hopefully you have that in your packet, this, sir, to approve, if you so choose to do.
I make a motion to refer to auction list.
How was someone that you picked up over there by the street department, tell them you?
What now?
Is it picked up as for sale, they were flat tire, it's kind of.
I have no idea.
I think it's a personal truck.
Well, that's actually, I think, somebody's personal.
I'm gonna ask you about that. What's in, Harry's huge car?
I've been asked about it and I don't know. Is that, Mr. Wiley, is that employee's car?
Yeah, I, I believe it, this is a Dodge Dakota. It's a sleek little one, ordering about 1500 miles, paint, flat tires, big for sale sign, I, I just saw a problem, maybe someone's on this auction, I don't know, this is a Dodge Dakota, I think it lost somebody's water. Maybe they have a lot of that thing, I don't know. It's, it's not any of my guy's trucks.
It's not?
No.
It's been there, it's been there for a while.
Okay, we'll find out, we'll find out.
The tires are there, it might say it's okay, leave there to sell, dude, it's that flat tire.
Well, or somebody's driving, or, yeah.
This is all new, except for the front, all of it.
Yes, yes, this is all new.
This is not what was down in the last.
No.
It has not been sold.
Has not been sold. We'll find out about that.
So, is, this for our bloodsinger, we can?
Yeah, we, we can upsell it, we can, that council approved.
Oh, I say your own motion.
Your motion is second, bring the list.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Hang on. What's wrong with the John Deere front mower, wastewater department, guys? Am I here, where's the air?
The guys aren't here.
They're not here. What, what, for the John Deere front mower that's on this auction? We're always wanting a mower, what's wrong with it? Does it run at all? The mower is very old, used along the street department, the, uh, or the street department, usually used sewer department at some point, it's very old. What's wrong with the snowplow? Snowplow is that dump truck that we almost saw the last time. It's too big for, and then we've got. Okay. Look like we're looking for that captain, he's building a bike mower next to you guys.
Terry?
Yes.
Lester?
Number six, street department, ordinance repealing, replacing, ordinance number 00 that's now regulating installation of culverts.
Talked about this last time. Was it, uh, model five was second before? Was it a drum and feet? Uh, probably a poppy under, have somebody install a culvert. Okay, let's break this down for the old dumb red next white day. I don't wanna hear about where as, now as, and here for, and therefore, and all these fancy words. We got somebody building a house, are we putting that culvert over that driveway on new construction? No. That'll be the homeowner and the contractor. The homeowner will come here, buy a permit from the planning department, I will size that culvert for him, then we'll have somebody install that culvert for him, other than how the street department, and we will inspect the installation of that culvert. I live on Mount Harmony, I got a little bit of a ditch, it's an awesome full ditch, it's mobile, I got a culvert over my driveway, I've now been building 1999, I'm, it's caving in and I need, I want that thing repaired, it's my responsibility to repair it, right? Correct. But I can't just call the city and contract y'all out or that? No. Okay. No, that's your culvert, that's your driveway. Okay, so when do y'all go fix somebody's existing culvert? Is it ever? Um, we, I mean, if it, if it's causing flood and issue, we have to do something. All right. But is the city on any ditches up in front of people's houses, or they're old, we don't? Yeah, we maintain those ditches, of course. Some ditches we maintain, we have to fix somebody's culvert. I've got, I've got a culvert in fixing and replacing on Denver Street, it's 48 inch top, this culvert replacement's gonna cost, uh, roughly $10,000 to replace, okay? I've contacted property owner, the property owner can sort of help pay for that culvert, but of course, you're saying it's gonna cost $10,000 a month for a piece five, a lot of people don't have that kind of cash, so if they're, if they're willing to help out with the purchase of it, I don't see why the city can't say, well, they, we'll probably help you out a little bit. Well, and I say all that just to, because I'm, I just wanted, I'd like for you to literally say that, if you're in construction, we don't help, if you have a house like where I'm at with a ditch, it's mobile and you maintain your yard, we're not. The problem that I ran into since I'm the street director, a lot of the people that own these properties here in town, um, well, there's only a select few that actually want to replace the culvert, but they, they want it now and I can't do it now. That's the way we're doing it, nothing's happened this week. Dr. Burgess offered to remove rock from the ditch, I can't do it, because I, I, 100% of my workforce is picking up the ditches, you know, and it's become a real issue for us, because we, we schedule stuff, like we're doing an asphalt job or, um, taking out a ditch, or whatever the case might be, we schedule that stuff and, and, you know, pull people, replace your culvert, your job, but just sometimes it's kind of hard. But you got a plan, that's what we like.
Do you like plans? So here's my plan, so if we stop up his culvert and it starts flooding, he'll come over and replace it?
Yeah, it's supposed to, it's actually supposed to say in here that if we replace the culvert, it's gonna be the expense of the property owner.
Well, that should be part of the plan.
Right. That's how I'm getting that, like, you know, I've always wondered that, with, just, I love, I love, you know, our dog, he think we'll throw his rummage bids every time he want to figure, whoever.
So, so do we need to add that?
I would say yes.
Okay, so where?
That's, that's what we need to talk, to talk.
Where's the most appropriate place to add it?
It would be, um, probably if you just say, section, uh, D of section four. So what if you got a, what if you got a culvert that your tank, his property in the ditch, it's not being maintained and that doesn't follow the mountain order, then when you got there? If it's a ditch problem itself, that's, that's a totally different issue, if it's a culvert issue, then that, that, those are two totally separate deals. If it's a ditch problem itself, that's, that's totally different issue, if it's a culvert issue, then that, that, those are two totally separate deals. You know, if the ditch is a problem water bill, there's, there's a question such as top versus lower culvert, that's totally, that's a totally different thing in the culvert, so, you know, something to address. So this is, this is a process tax period, money for us to go theoretically to remove rock of the ditch, or clean out the ditch, whatever the case might be, when we're replacing culverts, you know, we got the cost of the culvert itself, plus the backhoe material, hopeless, work, terrible equipment, and, uh, truck.
Because it's all, and, and Simon and I have had this conversation many times, because that's probably, I don't know, seventy percent of calls to city hall about drainage issues, culverts, and things like that. So, and, and it's kind of a part and the fun between the rock and hard place, you know, the ditches that, that we're talking about are part of the citywide drainage, I mean, that, those, that's our drainage. Some of them are a little different, some of them are farther in on people's property than others, so I, in my opinion, and Simon and I, we talked about this a lot, is that we, we, we have to maintain that, because if Mr. Smith, not culvert, really, although it's part of it, but that's an expense, not a word. Backhoe, you go out and fix a ditch pretty quick, where, where he's pulling guys off, I don't know, there's a fine line, so I don't know.
I mean, I've had people ask me about, just for example, I mean, the high speed van, you know, music, that's right there, twenty-nine driveway and one west, I mean, that ditch, I mean, I've, I mean, I've had other people, like, fill those, those type of ditches in, couple of them, you know, filled in, you know, where, where do we, I mean, that's...
Which, which is nice, looks good, makes it look good for you, easy to mow, but more they've all really got to be, you know, you gotta, you gotta start, I'm not very smart, but you gotta go, unless you're suggesting it, but you, you gotta, you gotta make sure all those line up.
That's my, that's my point, like, some of all these older streets.
Yeah.
Some of them have a...
Little bit.
A culvert this big around, like, it goes into a pipe.
We're all words, I believe.
It goes into a pipe this big around, so...
I gotta have an answer to your question. I'll, I'll give this scenario for you guys, when I, before I took this job, there was a culvert, a, a ditch, that a property owner closed in, put a culvert in, and, um, it caused the house to flood. This homeowner took a sled hammer and beat the hole into the top of his culvert. Before I started working here, uh, at this state, I was all the way in Main Street, I noticed this hole in the grass, and this, you know, fairly large hole, where this guy beat the top out, so his house went flooded. And I talked to Doug at the time, and I talked to Joe, and I said, you know, this needs to be fixed, this is a, this is a safety hazard, if a car was to drive off this, you know, that, that would cause damage. Well, the, the, the property with the culvert is now owned by the school, the, the, the homeowner still owns his house, and, um, you know, we, we went and we actually made a talk, and, and did a great talk on it. But, what I, what I've told people since I took over this position, if, if you're going to close in a ditch, then we need a hydraulic analysis done, because that hydraulic analysis is going to, is going to tell us that there's going to be drainage, you call it, but you wasn't in your ditch, such as that guy's house flooded. And we could avoid a lot of problems. We, we've had a, we've had a lady come and want us closing a very large ditch, and she wanted the street department to do it, and I told her no, that, that cannot do that because of liability, it's a very large ditch, first off, I told her she'd have to get a hydraulic analysis done, so we get, so she could adequately size that culvert. I don't have a problem inspecting that, if they have, if they have the hydraulic analysis done, and she says it's okay that that ditch is closed in, I don't have a problem closing that ditch, but we'll inspect, we'll inspect, work any done, but I don't, I don't think that we need to be doing that kind of work.
Like I guess here when you, uh, talk about section five, you know, one of the penalties, you know, says the city may remove any culvert of improper dimension. Well, we, I guess, do we need to address, you know, they're going to remove it, we're interested on, on how, what are you going to replace it back with, and who's going to pay for that, or?
I think if the property owner, I think really what this penalty was, was created for, this is, this is the, the ordinance, we didn't change this at all, but I think with that, with that, that people weren't getting their culvert sized, and that, that caused some play issues. So they said, if you're, if you're not going to have the size by the street director, then, you know, if you put in the wrong size culvert, we're going to take it out.
Alright, if, if it caused a problem.
Yeah, we, we're, we're still, we're still to this day kind of having a little issue with that, not to single out the Jones family on Main Street, but they installed their driveway, they never did come to us to give the size, they never once contacted the street department about putting it in the driveway. So if that culvert was improperly sized and caused splitting, we'd have no other choice but to rip it out.
Well, how do we prevent that from happening in the future?
Enforcement, but, but...
Well... Permit. If it ought to be taking up some of your time, I think that ought to be part of the planning, that's a new house, right?
That's, yeah, it is part of the planning, that's why they go to the planning department to permit.
So, why?
Yeah, you just inspect it, right?
Yeah, I just inspected the project.
There's got to be some communication from...
Right, there's got to be.
From mayday. That's what I think, you know, I think on that. We have a lot of that things sometimes.
So why didn't that communication happen?
On the instance of the Joneses, I don't, I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Well, I'm, I'm building.
There ought, in my thought process of that, there ought to be, every time there's a, every time there's a building for a mayor bond, it ought to be, it ought to be sent straight to everybody, it's due, I mean, it's involved.
Where we have, you know, is before that Jones got that certificate of occupancy, that's when our building department, now the mayor is talking about the administration, that's when the administration said, you're okay, and they go off, and they grab that certificate of occupancy, and they're off, and they don't care about any of that. Before that certificate of occupancy is given, there ought to be a checklist, and they want, you know, the street department said, it's fine, go for it, you know, off fire, everything's, everybody, but that doesn't happen, and it hasn't ever happened, and I don't understand.
I agree, I understand.
I just think what I was thinking would be the bill department, it ought to be, it ought to send a bill out to the fire chief, having the police chief, I mean, not all the department has to get something, you know?
I can, I can develop an ordinance that says no certificate of occupancy will be issued in city Greenwood without a check mark from every department, and put a penalty on it, saying that it will be a five hundred dollar fine or loss of your job, and that might get it done, but I shouldn't have to. Here's the boss, the boss goes back there and says, do not issue a certificate of occupancy until every department head has signed off on this, on this project, and all this will stop.
I think it can stop, I don't think there's, we can make it stop.
Well, this is a, this is a recent problem.
Well, I, I...
There's been a lot of changes.
You realize this, I come across my desk on a date basis, I mean, I, I don't, I don't...
New construction, there's a lot more...
And demand that, but we can, we can fix that, I mean, we work very well together. Sure, we're all this...
So we don't need, we don't need bill permits?
No, sir, I don't think so. I mean, you're welcome to write one, but I, I...
But I think that, that, is there any kind of checklist though, where it shows that every department has some?
I, I would like to get with Mr. Bell on that and talk to him about it, I know we do on, on businesses and things with HSA, but a, a home, I could probably say without a doubt enough, there has not been that.
All I was saying was, maybe, just, there was a few things like, you know, some things they may not know about, unless, unless it's like those...
I, I can, I can say without any hesitation that I don't daily check with the planning department on any, any one house being built, but we can, we can fix that, that's not...
But I guess, to me, to me, what I hear is Watson, you know, where the critical part is, is before that certificate of occupancy is issued, that's where we have, look, kind of the ultimate authority, and if there, if you don't see a checklist of everybody kind of saying, we've looked at that, we know, you know, everything is in order, because I agree, once you issue that certificate of occupancy, it's very hard, and...
We can fix it, right, Mr. Bell?
Yep, and if you have specifications on, on, on what the, uh, timing, we can...
Right, we, we've worked that out.
We don't have to do that, just, call Simon, please, you're okay, what's the size?
You need a minute? Your thing. We understand it.
I believe you're talking tomorrow.
But I guess on, again, I'll just get the, section five, and we'll talk about penalty, let's say that I'm a homeowner, and, and I didn't go through the process of, you know, letting people know that I was putting another driveway in my, in my yard, whatever, you know, and all of a sudden you drop by and you see it there, and, uh, so I need an incentive to remove that. And they said, well, no, I, I think just go ahead and fine me two hundred fifty dollars.
That's not, that's not very much, I mean, the, I, I think the fines aren't very enough. It's just a two hundred fifty dollar fine, somebody that sits in their driveway and you say pay two hundred fifty dollars, we'll call it alright, I don't think that's enough.
So where you want to put it at, four hundred fifty?
I think you start, should start five hundred.
But it's not...
Well, I think it should be good enough, but I mean, like I said, concrete and everything like that, I'm thinking, you know, well, yeah, I'll just start at another two fifty, because I don't want to rip up a, you know, five thousand dollar...
They got your penalty, the, the penalty is, you do it wrong, we're ripping it up, and we're going to fix it at your expense.
So you don't want to raise it to five hundred?
Well, what if it's a driveway, that's next to the top somewhere, something, and then I suppose that, and then you can't just rip it up and rip it up?
Well, penalty would be, because we probably report.
So what do you do that time? The way to stay, if you have a driveway, you fall on that driveway, it costs the removal, so, so say, um, TDI five is also build a restaurant on Center Street. They, 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 you will go, you will go to the highway department, and the highway department said, yeah, you can build that driveway, you got sixty days, and you have to put a bong on it for five thousand dollars. What will happen is if they don't build that driveway correctly, that five thousand dollars is, is really the money to put them just to remove the driveway, if they don't finish it, what do they, their, their specifications, their satisfaction, will kind of remove that charge of bong for that five thousand is the money for their removal.
Well, and I think, you know, I mean, there, it's, the, the fines should cover, I'm saying the cost of the seat you go out there and see after removing, so, you know, should cover that cost.
But if you, if, two fifty, five hundred, whatever amount you put in there as a penalty, it's going to have to go through the courts, and we all know what's going to happen with that, it's not very done.
And we never see it.
Rather than, I'd just strike that completely out of there, and say, anybody that's not in compliance, the city's going to tear it up and fix it at your expense, we're going to send you a bill. That's not a penalty, that's a... If we have to fix this...
We're going to tear it out.
We're going to have to tear it out, we're going to have to build it right.
If you don't pay for the lien on the property.
We built that driveway for our...
And we don't write you a ticket, we go send Jared Ricketts out there and write you a ticket, then you go through the court system.
Well, I, if we say, yeah, we'll, we'll build you and put a lien on your property, you know, then, then that will take that, or, I mean, if you say we build them, then I...
We did that driveway for a, it was over nine thousand dollars.
There can't be flat waste of grass.
Yeah, we have.
Yes, we have. I told him that we collect, we collect about nine hundred...
We have...
We don't park.
We actually got a plan. And it's working so far, a little bit.
That's the first nine hundred dollars that we ever got through the end of the department. I'm pretty stoked about that.
It's been twelve hundred.
Well, I, I, on B, if you could just write that and say that the, we would move it and, and bill the owner for the expense and for the, and the fact they could lien, I, I'd go on with that, and eliminate the fine altogether.
Yeah, the question that he was asking, I was going to put, culverts that are replaced by the city will be at the expense of the homeowner, fees will be at the prevailing wage, fees for labor will be at the prevailing wage, and a reasonable upcharge for the cost of materials will be applied.
Okay.
I bet you something, I just jogged it down.
Something, dude. I like that. You want that, you mean, what he just said?
Yes, what did you just say?
Okay, on...
Why don't you just give that a shot?
She can't read my...
I'm not asking from the email.
My foot, on E, I put culverts that are replaced by the city will be at the expense of the homeowner, fees, fees for labor will be at the prevailing wage, and...
Hold on a sec, I, I cannot suggest something, on section four C, why don't we just put the property owner is responsible for purchasing and installing?
Yes.
All we got to do is add purchasing and right there.
Where in the heck were you? Okay.
Section, purchasing and installing, and that would take care of the...
Yeah, that doesn't take care of them doing it wrong.
Right, but what else have you got? So I think that's a better fix for that, why stop, because culverts and...
Keep going?
Yes.
Okay, uh, fees, fees for labor will be at the prevailing wage, and a reasonable upcharge for the cost of materials will be applied. Now, prevailing wage changes, so we don't have to come back and revisit the ordinance in years and find out that it's cheaper for them to just haul in and say, we screwed it up, come put a pipe in, you know, there's always a Ford Brown that figures these things out, that is cheaper to pay for that.
Pay the fine already, probably.
Cheaper to pay the fine than the city does.
So that's E on section four?
Hey, I was going to call them out as a joke, those two guys are in there. Yeah, those two guys, you're very disciplined.
So are we changing anything to penalty section?
I thought we raised it to five hundred dollars.
Yeah, took this out.
I thought we took out the...
Why don't you just leave it in the end and do that?
No, because that...
I thought when you took out the penalty, you just said, we're going to build it and fill it in.
First one, that's smart, because if you vote, and they'll say, what's going to...
I mean, what Rod just...
What's that?
I think that's smart, I think we leave the penalties, let's say, well, the penalty is this, you know, so they'd have argument on paying the installation.
So we're going to eliminate the penalty, because I'm sure same, so I don't know, everyone's like...
Yeah, but if we have it in there, we're going to remove it, rebuild it, and build it.
Which is what you're talking about.
Instead of...
In E, is E the, you did it wrong, we'll fix it?
I thought it was going to be five B.
Yeah, I thought that was...
Well, but what Rod, Rod's language here, he's proposing, we're going to charge you for this culvert fee.
You have to look at, yeah, that's the, the penalty.
I see it.
That's five B.
Man, we're already being an impressionist.
We are clear about that, huh?
Well, I think...
We're talking about procedures for installing culverts, Rod's language goes on four E, right?
No, I thought it was meant on five B.
But that's, like, Rod's language is talking about the installation of culvert.
So that, the purchasing...
No, because if I do it, I'm going to be responsible for purchasing and installing it, but if I do it wrong...
On C, yes, so Rod's language needs to be five A.
Okay, five A, I'll put it in five A, just your B.
Yeah, it's tacked on right to the end of five A, you tacked that right over the five A.
Can all penalties proceeds will go to the parks commission for an award.
So if culvert is installed incorrectly by the homeowner, is that what you're saying, then the culvert...
They got to build a baseball field. There's also a typo on four D.
I get you.
It's corrected now.
Okay, it's corrected.
I got that.
Mr. Everett?
May I suggest that you do put all that money in parks?
He just, he just did it.
I would really welcome that.
Yeah, yeah, he just mentioned that, it's conspiracy, that's there, isn't it?
Can we, can we discuss something? No, not about culvert, I hope we do, I hope we do the thought process.
We voted on the...
Hell, this is, this is maybe a bit...
Yeah, if I make a motion, we adopt this ordinance with the changes just discussed.
Motion is second to adopt a title.
Is this going to be first read here, or is it... How long will you have any session?
One? You got it, you got it.
Ross, you appear to have a title going.
It just...
Motion is second.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
I'm either by you...
Is there a need for this emergency clause, or do we read the title first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are y'all fixing to rip up the Joneses tomorrow?
No, please.
People in this order that's fast, it's there.
I think it can stay with the different emergency in, in the title, it's just...
It's not, it's not just this, it's the future. Somebody comes to me tomorrow and says, I need you to build me a driveway, we're kind of obligated because of the current ordinance, that's why we put the emergency clause in there, so we can just get that one, you know, the...
So you're raising the emergency?
I say, yes, that's what, I'll, I'll make it, second, third, P.
I'll say, we...
Hang on, she made it to title, first P.
And ordinance, repealing ordinance zero zero dash zero nine regulating installation of culverts in the city streets with same rights of wagging compared to more than...
That motion, we lay same third.
Second.
Motion is two seconds.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God, I'm finished yet.
I make motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second. Motion two seconds.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
To that.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
For Daniel? To Terry?
Yes.
Make motion, we...
Second.
Motion second, to that emergency law.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
For Daniel? To Terry?
Yes.
To Terry?
Yes.
To Davis.
Thank you. Wow. Am I next?
I'm, I, I'm sitting on the third.
This one?
With him. He spends a whole bunch of time picking up limbs. Okay, and we started that, and we had to ask him where it was, just something we kinda started to do. So, you know, I don't have a problem with just picking them up, but... Is there any way we can look at maybe coming up with a system that having a place for these people just to take them and dump them? You know what I'm saying? I mean, as far as the work, we got a whole week's worth of wages, we're tying up, and, I mean, I think we did a lot of stuff, is what I'm saying, other than...
We used to just do that one day a week, didn't we?
But, we, we don't, and we just, we take that stuff out to the ser- serpents out there, and, like, in some kind of business, that's all restricted, you know? You just can't have everybody in there, you know, driving out to the serp, roadblock, all that kind of stuff, so... I don't want y'all to be entertained in some way, trying to figure out, because, you wanna fly around there, you drive a backstreet, you can't drive it to the road, because you got pushes on one side, basketball goals on the other.
Yeah, exactly. I, I, same place, I was in a guy this way.
And, I mean, we're, two things, we're gonna have to maybe figure out a different deal for that, and then we're might, we're gonna do something about these basketball goals, period. I mean, I, I don't have a problem just playing basketball, but you, you got thirty basketball goals on one street, you can't even do the fire truck, and then, I got a problem. We're eventually have to address it, I mean, I'll take the legal, I'm not beating up on the kids, but, and we're, and most of this property is for sale behind us here, where we shoot fireworks.
I spoke to the realtor today, as a matter of fact, and they got a price on it. It's, uh, eleven acres, and then wants, the whole, the whole block, just four hundred thousand. Um, now, they don't have, there's no appraisal on it, so, uh...
Well, my, my thought is, you know, when we shoot fireworks back there, we do all this stuff, and, and everybody's stopping, you know, just, all that stuff, but, but that would be a prime place to do a few things like that, I mean, we have to regulate them. You know, dog can...
I like that. Congratulations for the recycle.
I mean, there's, there's just a lot of things that can be, that can be put out there, but, my, my whole comment to this still is, is trying to alleviate him having to waste a whole week picking up pushes, and here's another thing, uh, that, that, and I've visited some of them about this, and we, you know, I, I think some of these people are using it for their benefit. So they're bringing these limbs, and, you know, they're going out to come train people, and then, a little way to, they'll pick up, they won't go out there and send them on the curb, they'll, they'll pick them up for free, we won't have to be out no money, you know, so...
Absolutely, happening, I, there, there's a couple houses I've noticed that they have interest.
But, another thing that I, that I think needs to be addressed on the limb thing, is they have to be a certain distance from the side of the road. You know what I'm saying, I mean, a little bit of a border distance from the side of the road, because, I'm telling you, some of these, some of these limbs, you go down some of these streets, I mean, they're, they're in the street.
Well, and he, and there is, I don't know if it's by ordinance, but certainly the instructions have gone out before, that they're not, one, placed in the drain, in the dr- in the ditches, because if, if during that time it rains, I mean, we now have the ditch stopped up.
I had that issue with one of your neighbors, Mr. Brown. The, uh, there, the end of your road, straight across, the lady was placing the limbs on, on the road itself. And I had a visit with her, I said, you can't put those, that limb pile in the road, because if somebody comes through there at night time, hits it, that's, that's an issue. And I told her, I said, you know, we're gonna push them onto your property till they pick up, and if you have them in the road again, we're gonna push them on your property and run and pick them up.
Let me ask you something. That, correct me if I'm wrong, that used to be, we're gonna pick them up on whatever day of the month.
First Tuesday of the month.
First Tuesday of the month, and you have to call down here, and, and give them here, get on the list, is that still how that works?
No, uh, we do the first Tuesday of the month, yes, there's so many houses we wanna pick up, the calls are just crazy. So we took that out, we drive all the roads, because there's limbs on every single street, um...
You stood, we, it's, and I, I didn't realize it stopped, but you stood and held the pull truck, and had them chipper, and just fed stuff in.
Yeah, we didn't feed them into people, you know, the...
Your wife?
It went into the truck.
It ran into the truck.
Our hog is so small, the amount of rest we possibly pick up, everyone, we pick up on the, the mountain of limbs.
Is there even a backstreet?
Yeah.
What happens, what happens? It's from that wall to this wall, the back. Is it John Bay's house?
No.
It's front of the house. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's, you know, it's eight foot tall.
Yeah, it is.
And that's...
Well, it's slowly going there.
It'll take, it'll take you, I mean, I don't have any trips, I don't have any trucks you'll be using, but...
It probably take three tr- three, probably four of the new dump trucks.
We're being abused, I mean, it was a, it was a, the little old lady with a wheelbarrow full of limbs, if you set them out there, we'll come by again.
And I still don't have a problem with that.
Now we're clearing lots.
Under the right circumstances, if, if it is an elderly person that needs some assistance.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
But, so what you do is say, the pilots might talk about it.
Or talk about that, and if the, it's the same thing with ditches, you know, we expect people in other ditches and from their houses, some people can't, physically can't do that. If they would call me, I would be happy to send somebody out to weed their ditch one, I would, uh, you know, that'd be great, if you can't do it, let me know.
So why, so, what, it looks to me like you could speed things up, we have a truck and a chipper. Everybody's got a new truck around here, why?
It isn't, that chipper, the chipper's not efficient enough, it'll be standing at that location, chipping instead of moving.
Maybe the chipper we have is not efficient, or whatever.
I don't think, I think...
We used to do...
Our chipper is a professional chipper, but you still have to feed those limbs.
It was really tight and small, and a second...
Mountain of brush, it would take so long to do that, it's so much easier to just fix it up, their bag, go to the trailer, and all that.
Right, they've been picking them up, Rod, honestly, we, we would be almost, like a West Tree Service truck, big, you know, camping truck, and two full-time guys, as much as they've been, I mean, as long as we would take, you know, chip that stuff up.
Well, I think we need to revisit policy, go back to, I mean, I don't know how you, how you word that, or what not West Tree Service.
Still think it's a service to provide, but not at the level that we've been doing. Well, it's...
It's the first two, did one hill just to...
Yeah, I don't know the third, I'm making policy.
Did you get my policy? Did you get my limbs out of the...
Yeah, I did, this is...
What's that, sir? Did you get my limbs out of Fire Station Ten?
Uh, they're starting to mow.
Okay, listen, maybe this one, that...
Where'd they come from?
Fire Station Two. I, I trimmed all the trees.
You know, I'll tell you, Eric, this is, I understand that they're starting, it takes them all a lot of time, which, point you can be doing, and should be doing, as a street department. It is, I, I mean, I like the fact that we have, we offer this courtesy, there are, there are those that need it, and, and, but there are a tremendous amount that abuse it, so...
That's what I was saying, that we had some place that, you know, say, look, you know...
But he, he's been out on this property for a while.
If they're a water customer, if they're, they're on our water customer list, or, hey, you can take them out here, you know, and you can dump them. You know what I'm saying, and, and, it'd still be a courtesy to them, but just, some of these people, they'll have to go and... There's no way to speed this up with a new, with a different piece of equipment.
I don't think so, because I, just to share them out, it's just a little on... Um, but...
I just trimmed all the stuff.
Is it possible to ask?
Your problem, no, I mean, but, I hate the problem. I, I mean, I, I hold on that off.
I think you ought to have to bring your limbs to the recycle center. If you go take a piece of land, say, you can go dump your limbs, you probably have dishwashers and everything else.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, I mean, you have to be, you have to be able to regulate somehow, but...
Well, if you said, bring them to this recycle center, so we can, we gotta run in the cease recycle, cause stand there and chip them up, it's a...
They don't have a guy that manages it.
They don't have somebody to manage it, off every day. Just chip it all up and sell it, everything.
Well, they used to do that, and they gave them, you know, some of them.
The problem was, that it was too acidic, and had all kinds of stuff in it, and it was ill point.
Because it's everything.
Because it's everything, oh, don't mind if said it. Said it really wasn't good for... No, no, I want some of it, he said I wouldn't insert on my ornaments, because it's ill. Because it's got too much of everything in it, acidic.
Well, obviously, what happened, guys, is you started this as a courtesy for the, couldn't do it themselves, and it's being abused, because I would call every day about, you know, and they just, and I remind them that it is a courtesy, this is just a courtesy, because they are very demanding.
They were, they were...
You... Oh, exactly, I mean, they will, they will chip them out.
And we can still offer some...
And I remind them daily.
But, where is the policy written now? Where do we have that?
It's, it's just, it's just kind of rules and regulations, I mean, I have a copy of it, if I, if you get it. It's not really a policy, it's just...
Well, in the, the sanitation, I guess, regarding that, something like, where you had a large pickup.
And it's on our, it's on our website.
So we just think that's...
Yeah, it's, I know, and you guys started this as a, as, as just that, a courtesy, people are abusing it.
Can you put it on our next month's agenda, and then make suggestions?
You want limb pickup policy on the next agenda?
Do you think that it was, uh, I think you could place a label on it, so maybe, uh, now the enterprise on the property?
Yeah.
Do you want that on the agenda?
It don't hurt that.
Sure. Maybe that's right, or on it.
Do you want it on the agenda, or does the matter?
Yeah, let her, I'll give this information this month, and then have the next month's.
Okay, I'll be right there.
I just, I just believe we have to talk a few hours.
Yeah. It takes a lot of time.
A X C's got an idea, you know, in our sanitation contract, we have two large item pickups a year. It may be that we have two limb pickups a year.
Well, you also have in your sanitation contract, the backdoor service for elderly people who aren't able to take it out to the street, or whatever. I mean, you could do something similar to that.
Right.
Because when you start talking about who is and who isn't able to pick up their own limbs, or whatever, I mean, how do you define it?
I think you're gonna have to do it or not do it.
Yeah.
For some, for some reason, we went to do it twice a year, you're gonna have to advertise a limit snaw out of that, because if not, come the first Tuesday of every month, you know, and then they're gonna be going at tenies phone down here, because where y'all inch up picking up limbs? And then, and then we're gonna, then you're gonna have some that are just gonna leak until...
They rot.
Yeah, the problem is, you're one time a month now, and you've got more limbs than you can pick up one day a month.
That's true.
What you gotta do is figure out how to limit the amount of limbs.
Well, that's why I say, the only way you're gonna do that is if you, you got a place to drop them off, you're gonna do away with it, you're not gonna just start stacking them up, then, your average person is a, a, a lazy little back truck, you know, that's gonna go away. So, if you start saying, okay, but like, the backdoor deal, we've got, the elderly folks that can't do it, called down here, it's legit, you know, he goes out, says, oh, I, I'll take care of that, and, you know... Mark Terry, for example, this one was living, the list goes on and on, the people that, that, you know... But I just think if we don't have a spot, I know it would, you know, I mean, and fix it works, maybe, regulating some kind of other, who can, I don't know. Or maybe when they go, when they go dump, they gotta come through, and somebody from, somebody that's not here, they're gonna look one of them in the trunk, and then, you know...
I was gonna pursue the legislature session about maybe opening a petition for a recycle center, a disaster care center, and, um, because we're getting a lot of just non-recyclables, garbage, refuse, whatever, we're doing it all, just becoming a real dead, and, uh, tire they dropped off, there's refrigerators out there, because we're out there, we're out there doing other things, and, uh...
I thought it was shut unless they hit a button, somebody could open it.
No, no, we're not automatic gate, we opened it at seven AM, and it's open, but we're...
Do you need somebody to call you up there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, that's my...
It requires somebody to be in the shop.
Yeah.
It's a normal shop, like, you drop off stuff, you don't get tired of the print trip.
But they do, but they do it in...
With a little bit of time.
Or they put it in front of the gate?
Yeah.
This is just for your leisure, for you, that's all we have.
Little camera out there.
Anyway, I just spoke about, you know, my eye still say, for some, uh...
You can find that, I must... Property.
Forty, now, like, a hundred.
That's cool.
Four more, actually, that's...
But, I mean, it's still theirs.
Sometimes I just don't think they think that it's just a courtesy, I think it's just, they're just expecting it.
Our Olympic, if there was all these, we'll start tomorrow, and, you know, and by, by Thursday, you might go to the next one.
And if, and if they don't get it out, I, I, I always tell them when they call, because every time Simon gets done, there'll be Joe, or Billy, or Sally, or Sue, or somebody called and says, hey, can I have my limbs? And I'm like, well, okay, did you have it out there by the first Tuesday? Oh, yes, 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 well, did they really? Probably not, you know, but Simon will take it up anyway, or have somebody pick it up, and that's just crazy.
So a convoy, they pick up limbs once a week, and then, everybody has to put all their stuff in this paper cube bag, everything is all in a paper, paper cube bag. And so they drag mine in this machine, and they chuck it in there, and it just obliterates it into the back of this truck, and I mean, it's like that. And it's probably the size of that bag, so they buy them at the local stores, and they're about that big, and they're square. But that machine just obliterates it, I mean, just instantaneously, and it all goes back in the truck, and then they take, they, it's just a big mulch pile.
It'll probably work if they leave them in bags.
Some places put a limit, like, four foot wide, four foot high, six foot long.
Yeah, but you have to use their bag.
If you get us longer than that, they leave it.
Everything has to be in their bag, it's not in their bag, they leave it. But that bag goes right into that thing, and it just obliterates it, and they do it once a week.
And then they'll drop off the larder.
Well, would it, would it help if you just went to every three months, and have, you know, just, once a quarter?
Why would they do it with all the stuff when they get done?
Well, they take it out to their recycle center, and they just got these huge mulch piles, and then, all the landscapers come get out of it, and all the residents come get it, and they put it in their yard.
We have a mulch pile back there, I don't think that many people are getting mulch out there, we can say that not a mulch, if we produce from the city.
Should I ask, what, what do we do, what would we do if only, what do you do if you burn it down, right?
We burn it down. We don't have that so much, if we mulch to do, one month for the last this year.
Do we, or do we check with EPA or anybody like that?
No, we just follow burn bans.
You can burn anything, naturally, it'll take us...
Not any issue. No, not burning any refuse, or even manufacturing, but...
Burning the cabs, wheels, lead, that's the best function we...
Wish your cops on the way, busy with them, asking how their system works, and what's the downside of it, since it work very well.
I can do that this month, or I'll do some field trip.
I think I'll take field trips.
Field trip.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, yes, road trip, convoy, let's go, I'll take a little field trip.
Anyway, that's my two cents on the ground.
Well, I think you're right, something needs to be done, because, I mean, Simon really says, I mean, he's, one week out of a month, that's a lot of, uh...
And y'all start giving out basketball goals too, because that's my next...
Mulch.
Yeah.
We'll just get it.
Sir, I know, we are on five, six, six.
Six, ten, and up.
Got two more. Thank you so much, to answer your question, you're not up next, but if you wanna go ahead, it's okay with you, just wait for there, let's do eight, then seven, that'll be fine.
I was contacted by the highway department last, last week about, um, state aid approval for overlay. The, the, the streets that we submitted for overlay are, uh, Bell Park Road, Daisy Street, and, uh, West Denver, from seventy-one to Senatorie, and Damascus. We've already overlaid Daisy and Bell Park Road, so that pretty much, so I think we're gonna handle Damascus in-house as well, that pretty much leaves West Denver Street. What this state aid project pays for is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over construction, the cost of the overlay, um, anything over that falls back on the, the street department.
Um, anything over that falls back on the, the street part. I'm not sure what the estimated cost of doing that project is. I won't know till next week when I meet with them. Um, but it's something that's, it'll be good for greenwood, definitely. It'll make, uh, pretty much like Main Street when I did Main Street five years ago, but for West Denver Street, which definitely needs to be overlaid.
Needs to be wide, it needs to be wide.
It does, but this, this.
We need to deal with the drainage, deal with, you know, curb gutter, put drainage under ground, widen.
And widen.
Yeah, I, I, come here and get me a pipe. We gave you guys, we gave you guys five seconds to do that and you came through.
We want to have made it about seven, eight, real quick.
You know, from somebody that lives on that side of town, there's a wrong side, wrong town a day. I, I can turn to Webster and the traffic's backed all the way up to Webster. And I told my kids, watch this and count cars. We spun around an eye doctor's hill, went, went down to Denver and I tried to do it. And I turned left on Denver and I said, now count the cars. And from Denver all the way to the Mexican food restaurant, we counted three cars. Now they're backed all the way up. All that we have to do is get, is widen Denver, raise the speed limit a little bit and people would start using Denver. But that's a, and I hate to even say it because that's how I get around, that's the best kept secret of greenwood.
I know, why are you talking about it? I'll.
You'd have to require a lot of force, relocate all utilities in that area.
Wayne Low wanted to widen Denver Street, but when I settled the council with Wayne Low. I don't know how long ago that was, but there we go.
So we can manage.
It haven't gotten cheaper.
It hasn't gotten cheaper and this is life in the big city. I mean, you have to widen streets, you have to buy easements, you have to relocate utilities. I mean, it's gonna have to happen sometime.
Or we gotta come up with money, that's the problem.
Oh, we got us, we got us dedicated sales tax.
Well, here, here's what you face with, you face with, you face with the federal aid grant that you just, the exact same one that we got for the overlay on Main Street. And we, and we had the exact same conversation and I, and I'm all for it too, but you either need to agree just to get this thing overlaid with this money or truly pursue what you're talking about. And I can tell you from, and I'm not against it, I'm, I'm all for it, but you gotta know, and you already do know, the price from Lanny's house to Main Street to widen, decker lining, sidewalk, curb gutter, everything except, uh, utility relocation was, I, I, Sonny helped me, was it five million, five million dollars? And then another five million to, to, uh, the next pasture house on down and then another five million. And that was when I had offered to weird it three years ago. So I'm assuming that's probably seven-ish, eight-ish. I mean, I, I think you're, everybody's agreed that we have to do it, but you.
We can't do, we can't do the whole thing.
No.
But let's take up a section, let's do it right, be done with it.
Okay, during this process, this, this overlay?
Hey, I'd love to take the two hundred fifty thousand applied to doing it right, but I don't hear if we just get it.
I don't know that they do, but I think this is.
Two hundred fifty you can get from Senator Street.
I mean, if you overlay, but I couldn't be taxing a lot of money from, from Senator Street, you know, to, to, to.
I think, I think we can, I don't, I don't think they would disagree.
And widen that a little bit there or maybe put the terminal in or something like, and put a little bit of decker lining in there, you know, kind of this stuff. I mean, we wouldn't necessarily have to do a whole way, but I mean.
You want in with your prices, I mean, I think.
I want to get prices.
I want to get prices. I, I think.
I want to get one of those, you know?
Huh?
Well, get the idea.
Do I?
Honestly, I don't think the highway department.
No, 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 I think there, I think there's, so you don't think they would even?
No, because this, this is an overlay for, and it's an overlay.
Okay, well then, send their overlay, what was your other option?
Brother, we've already done.
You've already done all the other options?
Yes.
One was Daisy and we have, we, we were allowed three options, right?
We did, we turned it four options.
Four.
Yeah.
We did Daisy. Damascus is the only other.
Bell Park Road, we already overlaid that.
In Bell Park Road.
Daisy Street, we already overlaid that. Uh, Damascus needs more before it can be overlaid.
Now we got.
And then West Denver.
We have a meeting, so we can ask exactly what you're asking.
As I recall, the main, the main street overlay required us to do some sidewalk work on both sides, if I'm not mistaken.
No. It, it.
It required, it required.
There wasn't sidewalk, I think there were some, there was some verage in there, we didn't do any. But, but we had a discussion of should we go ahead and widen it, just like we're doing now, which is a good discussion to have, I mean.
Well, I'm just asking somewhere, so we, we have a little strict on it and, I mean, we, we widened that part right there by the tire place and the revenue office, you know, down there, kind of slicked it up a little bit.
We widened that section by itself, the signal lights along there cost probably a hundred thousand dollars them replaced, because they're gonna have to be replaced with a new one.
Great. There are. How much is in the, how much is in the city for the city, the street and sales, U-Stacks?
Four hundred and some.
Oh, it's all nice.
It's more than U-Stacks.
No, we're talking about the whole, we're talking about.
Three, one point nine.
Okay.
There we are.
But, but what you gingerly reminds you, and you hate this when I do this, that we are.
I did hear that.
Well, but we are under.
Twenty years.
We are currently under a study. Four A, widening, I mean, four A new budget.
That same study runners for widen, then, then restricted to Senator, seventy-one, too.
Do I?
That's the, we're talking about widen, but that same study.
Not this, no, no, document the new study through Dr. Percus.
The list, I guess, we used to be.
That's probably where I pulled the rug.
What do you mean, what do you mean used to be on?
We're still on.
We're still on the list, it's just they're not really paying.
I only say that to give them a record that, you know?
It's not because of us, it's just because of the, the project is, there's a lot of money associated with that.
Well, Simon, if you turn down the overlay, I mean, is that, is it like one shot?
It's your money, you know, when you turn it away, you know?
You know, we, this is our second one and they're very, I don't know that anybody else has been offering a second, I mean, they may have, but I just.
And, and my experience with the highway department, probably before I came here, is a lot of, a lot of cities had to share that two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that, that, over the, the last portion of my time at the highway, highway department, so the last project that I was a part of, Bonanza, Barling and, uh, I think Mansfield and maybe even Hack, they had to share that two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And they're offering us the whole thing.
How far down Denver can we get with two hundred fifty thousand?
I think we'd be pretty close with overlaying from, from Senator to seventy-one. We might have plenty of, you know, less than a hundred thousand, sure.
Remember what we did over, what we were over on Main?
Yeah, I think it was, uh, I wanna say it was off the top of my head, forty thousand, but that also included the square overlay at the parking area of the administration building. And, uh.
I think we need to overlay it.
Yeah, absolutely. Get that money, take off, we'll work that widen later after we bypass.
There you go.
If it needs to be overlaid, something needs to be done bad. I mean, y'all matched it good, well, that, that.
Yeah, there'll still be a little leveling associated with that project, uh.
Do you want me to pass up the?
No.
Yeah, well, especially from, from a state agency, federally, that, that.
It'd be states.
You stated, I'm sorry, that you will want, could we reapply that A, ASAP, can we, can we apply to this?
Your, your rate, isn't that great? There's, there's your rate between, we have to, so we, we get this this year and next year we can apply for a volunteer.
Well, you can apply, it just will, it'll be in a following, applied but not eligible until the next year.
So acquiring easements usually takes a long time.
Oh, it does.
Or plus or rainbow. So what? What, wouldn't it behoove us to start acquiring easements on Denver's workflow?
If it's, if it's, if it's what we want to do, yeah.
Some point is what we're gonna have to do.
I, you know, that'd be great to go from, from, uh, you know, Spurton to Huntwood, like, you know, y'all were talking about, kind of do it right. But I'm thinking, you know, let's do this overlay and then we'll address that, you know, because I think it, I think it would look nice, you know? And, and show them what we can do, you know, all the way, and even if we.
My suggestion is to give it three years. Three years is all I ask for, let's try to see what happens with the bypass. If the bypass doesn't happen, I still have money in the bank, we can drill that route. But if we don't have the money in the bank, when the, when the state says we're ready to do this, after all these studies are done, then we're not gonna have a bypass either. We're, we're not gonna have any money.
You think they're gonna do it in three years?
That's what they told us, first year's a study year, second year's environmental, and the third year's the bu, design, and then if they have the money, they'll be ready to drill. And if we don't have our city portion of it, they're gonna pass this by the same thing.
That's our city portion.
But it's.
Half. Who does? Half, half of what?
Half order. Hawkins, we're, we're. That's the next of that sixty-seven thousand dollars. So I have almost two million.
Sixty-seven million.
Yeah, sixty-seven million. And I've got two million in the bank by the time that study's done, I'm getting pretty close to having half, if those numbers are correct.
Couple of beard attacks in there, he's a goat.
He's still pretty young.
And, and you know.
He throw that youth money to me.
We constantly, and I, I don't, nobody's making us any promises, but we constantly, if, when senators or when congressmen walk back seats, myself or anybody, bring them down, he's like, I, do what about that? I mean, we're, we're knocking, we're, we're working hard. Begging them every time we see these guys, you know? And I know it's been a long time.
Just make sure we restock that phone real quick, if we're gonna work on the overlay in Pittsburgh, that upgrade is, keep it in the main thing.
If they, if they, if they were to pass, if they were to do the bypass and overlay.
They already has that.
We know that, but then what happened to that?
What's our?
Yeah, I'm saying, do we have any money to remake this?
Somebody's.
Yeah, right. It's like building another new playground.
We're gonna make it. Anyways, I mean, could be tall, it's happening, the surface of the road, we're on the, the, we're mowing the driveway.
Right. The surface of the road.
We are. Okay. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number eight, technically number seven, bond report, just there.
Does anyone report and require the domain's responsible parties to bond? The police act on section nine of the constituent compliance policy, any or parts, any or reports to the city council concerning compliance, bond units. Uh, to not all matters concerning the bond or compliance and all requirements given the field plot, on or by half thousand, is there any other questions?
So we can pay it off a day for two point seven million dollars?
Two point seven five. Just trying to make it quick, that's all.
We got one point out of the streets.
This is for the place.
Oh.
What street?
So losers make us aware, right?
Yep. Nope.
Would you like any, anything from the department heads at this time, I know you got their reports?
Sure.
I like it. Sonny, just to give us a synopsis of your annexation report.
Yeah. Yeah, basically I included that in my report, so to give you an idea of what, where we are on that, you can see the outline, it's going down, uh, seventy-one. This is the corridor we talked about. And it will go down, uh, seventy-one, it will include the, uh, subdivision over there north of, uh, west of the, uh, water girl club. And down to Hendrick Road and then on the south side of, uh, Highway ten, uh, to the city limits. And up at Pittsburgh, it's on the north side of Highway, uh, Pittsburgh to the city limits. But then the corridor was all the way up to, uh, past Bendland.
And so, I mean, is that, that Elm, Elm Street or Elmwood cut off or is that?
That's right. And going all the way down to Hendrick Road. This will, this will give us the ability to control our, uh, commercial entrance to the city. And it will also work, uh, towards, you know, uh, this would be something that we might look at, uh, abroad, looking at the, uh, the plan as far as, uh, planning for certain businesses. Because this is it right now, you know, the, uh, if somebody could come in, I could, and I don't know who they have to go to, with a paper in the county. And they want to build a, a business private club, I don't know if that's what the county or what. You know, there's some state legislation, there's, there's some state law on that, on a distance right outside the door. It, some of it really goes towards hotels. You can see where some hotel and motel kind of got just right outside and it says the city can go in and regulate that. I've seen lips over script, county line liquor, you know, they're, one side, one side of the building that's, it's dry and on this side it's wet. This is a new deal to us, I mean, we, we had had this before, so. In North Old Rock, they have, uh, uh, areas within North Old Rock that are dry. The whole city is not wet. They have precincts that are, that are dry, unless they've changed it to that good job area. Well, I know that North Old Rock has a ton of improvement districts and that improvement districts have their own tax base, they've got, you know, they're, they're just their own almost little entity within. Well, you know where, our, your mayor in North Old Rock, you know, Park Hill is, the top of Park Hill is dry, but Lee Beach and the others around the bottom of, of that hills was wet. While there wasn't any future places up there. No future places ever. Yeah, go down to Lee Beach. But anyhow, uh, A C, this, this is our first, uh, map on this, we're, we're checking the, the legal description now, make sure that it's correct. Uh, you know, we'll be ready to go, uh, you know, I would imagine, you know, that's up to you guys, I want to do a special election or if you want to go to the next general election. But, uh, uh, I think we've got a good shot on it. I, uh, like I said, I talked to Tim Toman and he's kind of given us some ideas on this and so, you know, once I get the, the, uh, uh, legals verified and, uh, basically go to my county and, and, uh, you know, start the procedure.
So, I mean, we could be looking, if we did do it on a special election, uh, maybe like in the early spring or?
It could. Yeah, we're that far along.
Sonny, how come we don't have a bigger box right there at seventy-one and ten spur?
What, what?
Why is there a bigger box right on seventy-one and ten spur area?
What we did, uh, Tim, we took three hundred foot on, on both sides and, and just teed down. Now, if, uh, for a champion to know, uh, Burton property pretty bad, it's deeper than, than three hundred foot. But we maintain that control there. So if somebody comes in to Burton, Burton is already going to the city, he said.
That's what I understand.
But, uh, and, and we could do that, we could go ahead and, and take in the Burton property completely. And that's, you know, that's why I'm, I give you these things, because I want your feedback. But I can say, okay, we, we're gonna take all of Burton's property in on this and that will, that'll change the, the face of this map. And, uh, you know, if you see any others, uh, that you, you know, you want to change, then, you know, that'd be the time to do it.
Well, we, we've just been told for years that he's been wanting to come in.
Yeah.
Due purpose at the.
Yeah.
So I, I, you know, what he wants.
He just wants to get it, get it leveled off a little. Do my thing.
What's the status of that property?
He's improving it a little at a time, you know, you, you know that the front part of it is pretty well flat. And if somebody wanted to come in there, if Casey wanted to locate there into the where they, uh, decided to go, you know, fun if he could, he could go ahead and finish it off. He's at that point that he could go ahead and push things.
Work on fire?
Huh? Yeah, you know, he's worked with, uh, uh.
Wilson.
Tyler Wilson has been working with him on it, you know, and they've had some people that were, that were interested, you know, for one reason or the other. Uh, and, and two, to your point, Tim, uh, if he wasn't in the city, I think it would, uh, make a little bit of difference. People that, that are probably going to know that, that I've talked to with him and I'll tell him, you, the property coming in over the city is no problem, it's just, you know, gonna be some paperwork.
There'll be some more stringing.
Yeah. And.
That's where we need that restroom. There's a fire right there.
Yeah. But anyhow, I, I just want to go look at it, uh, you know, next, uh, next meeting, if you got any more ideas, you know, I'll go ahead and fix land Burton property, but if you have any more ideas, you know, we're, this is.
I mean, I guess contact him later, you know, I don't think, if we do that, I guess.
The mayor has promised me he's gonna start at Elmwood and he's gonna work all the way down both sides.
Well, that one record, sure, if you got those to come in.
Yeah.
Up there.
Yeah.
And, yeah, let's see.
That was a good house.
Yeah.
That was?
Yeah.
He has a record.
Yeah, that's him.
Okay, he's got, I think, at least one or two.
Did you hear him tell you? I like that.
Well, I, I really like the border aspect of it, because I think that'd be easy to. Well, I, I really like the border aspect of it, cause I think, you know, that'd be easy to, like I said, if he did just want to come all the way home and just request.
You know, this, this goes back to the attachment, you know, we can't control it if we don't, if it's not.
Power.
And, uh, you know, uh, we don't want a triple X, uh, billboard on the entrance to, to Green. It has to happen in other places.
And, and I, I just think we'll find, I think this is very new, I think we'll find less objection for people saying, oh, that's commercial, I consider that commercial anyway, right here.
There's less people at things. You know, if you took all those, uh, parcels there, you're probably looking at thirty-fourty feet. Yeah, instead of what we were before, we're looking a hundred, right? So, so that's, that's to our opinion.
I like you. Appreciate it, Sonny.
All the laughter, Chris, is there any way you can keep the duck crutch?
I have not, you know, I've seen the rumor, but I haven't had that verified. And. And, and I hadn't heard anything, uh, it was a, a rumor, you know.
KFC was shutting down as long as we Taco Bell.
My kids told me that's gotta be right.
Well, all I know is a year ago, they sent me some plans on a remodel, and it was for both of them. It was a KFC, uh, Taco Bell, so.
You know, if you would please, everybody can buy KFC's most day.
But you know, they shut the one that all rubber.
I would, but we stayed there, we didn't know, they're on the hill.
You what?
One on the hill wasn't all.
Uh, no doubt the other end, uh, in front of holes.
Oh.
That's gonna be a freight.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Any other department heads that we'd like to hear from?
Mr. Marsh.
Mr. Marsh, yes, sir.
I don't, city sales, oh, great. How's your wife doing?
She is doing very well. Looking at Thanksgiving before she'll be able to walk, uh, again, put away on her holiday. And in about a month, worth of a very intense, um, we're trying to release her home by Christmas, if they do inpatient therapy, and, um, the doctor says that everything goes as well as it's been proceeding, she probably go back to work after first.
Had something, you probably never told about the donor, sales use tax. If, if, if you look at it on a, the city sales use tax, we're always beating the year, but if you, when you glance back to county sales and use tax, I've always wondered how they, you know, it seems like we don't do it as well, even when city sales tax is up. How do they split the proportion? Are they doing it per capita? And you probably have no idea at this point.
Well, I can look at the, uh, there's a formulary that that's put in, you know, it breaks it out and dissect out where to get back with it.
Well, it's just something that you ever happen to, so city sales and use tax, if it, if it comes in the city, it goes to D F, uh, Department of Finance, and it'll come straight back to the city. But when we pay county sales tax at Walmart, city sales use tax is coming directly back to us, but the county sales tax is going to state and then coming back to county, and then the county's got a formula where they split it all up among the communities. I've just always suspected, do we get an unfair split?
Well, they actually show us each of the, um, on the cover, but they actually show us how each of the communities in the surrounding area get broke out, I can answer the vibe that.
So you think it's per capita?
Uh, if, if, and how we have any way to know exactly. So, I can check into that.
And that may be the reflection of our population, that the census was ten years ago, our population is so much higher, they're going off of the ten-year-old population, but the direct dollar, the actual dollar amount that goes to Walmart comes directly back to us, and that may be the reflection of how far off we are as a population on what we're getting paid for.
Could be. Um, I'd have to look into it. Right now, I've got way too many other things on my plate. Then to dissect something like that, but that, that would be analytical work, and right now, trying to get accurate numbers.
Yeah, I understand. And, yeah, it's just something that was across my mind.
Well, if, if we do the annexation, I mean, of course, like Sonny says, on like thirty, forty homes there, you know, I mean, would you suggest that we, you know, request a, another, uh, pay for a, whatever it is, another census or whatever.
Census, they were very expensive. You have to really, you know, the last time we did it with annuals here, uh, we took a look at, you know, what the census cost versus what we'd actually received back, and it's gonna be like four or five years to pay for itself, and then we got to outlay the money immediately, maybe four or five years before actually you got it back. And then the best thing to do is annex before the census taken, we're always behind.
Census is three years anyway.
Yeah.
Your charts, uh, threshold, autographs have been updated to be reflecting the actual, uh, years now, and, uh, two thousand seventeen is now reflecting the, uh, year dates. So those, those have been made accurate.
Right.
They're not pretty much.
That's, that's great, thank you.
I was just a curiosity, I was reading them.
Oh, that was, oh, that's a challenge, except.
Thank you, Tom. Any other department heads you'd like to hear from? Uh, Captain Form, we haven't had any. I have a little something I need to do, or I need Charlotte to do for me. I have had the honor of being the governor appointed, uh, to the compliance advisory panel. Seeing my wisdom, I know everybody laughed. So, but it requires being sworn in, so if you will allow that for a quick, I need to.
The parts are now, I think, through this office, this might be just only three or four that's happening this night.
And I'll wait until everybody left, so we can grant. Maybe grant standing over there.
Over the black sand, come here.
That's fine.
All right, raise your right hand, please. And repeat it. I Douglas Kinslow.
I Douglas Kinslow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the governor's compliance advisory panel.
The duties of the governor's compliance, advisory compliance panel.
As far as the advisory.
That.
None of us can say. Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Well, they do.
And congratulations. Make sure that all the papers know.
Thank you.
Very proud.
Appreciate that, thank you. Okay, um, again, yes, sir.
Uh, just thanks for making Green look good and accepting that position.
Uh, it's an honor, I'm not sure what it all involved, I'm gonna find out.
You make Green look proud.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And I'm sorry about your day.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and thank you again for prayers, and continue those, cause it's a long, hard road, I know some of you and a lot of you have already had that experience, and it's no fun, and, and as I've said, here on this, I've lost my, my big buddy, so life goes on, and we'll do our best. Thank you, everybody, thank you for making it easy for me up here at this table, I enjoy it very much, I don't get too mushy, but, uh, it won't take long for me to cry, but I appreciate you guys, I appreciate the work that we can do, and to be able to discuss, uh, not cuss, but discuss, as we did tonight, not necessarily agree, and get stuff done, I think that's favorable to all of you gentlemen, and Mr. Eric, and everybody involved, so appreciate that very much, and I would entertain any motion, please remember the folks in Vegas and prayers and thoughts, lots of them, I don't know that they've found them all yet, but that's just, it's a drag to say this, so, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Yes. I'm starting today. I will try to remember, I will try to remember.
They say you turn your. I was enjoying watching you try. That's what I have to do there. Dude, that's hard. So I have to do that, so. I still get it wrong. But I have to.
Yeah, it's my check, not your. Doc, how are you? Yeah, I've seen how long I get, won't you? Good evening, everyone, I'd like to call this meeting the order of the city council Monday, October the second, two thousand seventeen, at seven oh four P M. Mr. Eric, you would read the road reports, please.
Casey Brown.
Here.
Dr. Lee Johnson is at, Senator Rob Powell.
Here.
Daniel Daniel.
Here.
Tim Tarron.
Here.
Liz Tarron.
Here.
There's the four.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, if you would please rise, we will have our prayer this evening by Pastor John Newberry from United Methodist Church called by Blessed Legions by Chief Will Dawson.
Well, it's great. Holding on, we give you thanks for this day and this time together, and we give you thanks for this wonderful country we reside in, and for this wonderful city that we live in. We give you thanks for our homes and for our families, we give you thanks for the city workers who keep us working, moving, we give you thanks for the road crews, the police officers, and the firefighters who keep us safe. We ask your blessing on the meeting tonight, as these men and women come to do the work of our city, give them the strength and the courage to do what is necessary for us, and be fruitful in our community, and move us forward into the future. We give you thanks for the freedom that we experience together, together like this, to talk about what we need to do, for who we are called to be, for you and your people. In your son's holy name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, I would ask the council to, uh, look over, if you have not had a chance, the minutes for September eleventh, council meeting.
How many votes will you put in for this minute, Mr. Ware?
Thank you.
Say.
Motion in a second.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
How? Daniel.
Yes.
Tim Tarron.
Yes. And you, uh, noble, mild report to you this evening, recognitions and acknowledgements. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention tonight, as far as that goes, is to be mindful and certainly prayerful, uh, in your thoughts and prayers daily, for the folks in Vegas, Las Vegas, uh, those folks that have lost their lives, and certain of the, of family members, I have my youngest son, is currently living in Vegas, and he's fine, he lives about, about three miles from where this incident happened, and he's fine, but he's still sort of checking on some friends of his, and has not heard back, so remember those folks down there, if you would. We will go right into committee reports, I mean, Kenny Sunday, I believe, was here, I don't know, did you give a written one tonight, Kenny?
No.
Okay. Come on up.
Okay, I'm doing all right today. We are, uh, experiencing a lot of good things out there, club, after school movement, uh, we're about our kids away from having to put a waiting list on it now, uh, classrooms are packed with volunteer, uh, retired teachers out there helping with the homework and everything, which really helps me out, cause I can't do it in math, so, uh, I don't know. Louisiana education sets you back a little bit, but, uh, next Monday, I want to invite all y'all at six thirty at Bell Park Pavilion, we are doing our dinner for supporters, and we're putting Miss Betty Wilkinson in our Hall of Fame, Tyler Wilson's gonna come in and speak for us, uh, we're really excited about that. Uh, I've been there for about thirteen years, and I've seen people that, the original people that's been out there, Doc Murphy's, H B Stewart, uh, Jim Walters, uh, people like that, I mean, what a great generation, Mr. Fred, and then that, that is just incredible generation, and, uh, we're, we're sitting there on our fifty third year as an organization, so we're really proud about that, and a lot of people can say they've been around fifty-three years, so we'd like to invite all y'all over there, we're starting soccer this weekend, and, uh, then we're starting basketball signups now also, and we're looking for coaches, and, uh, so we're looking for volunteers in there. Uh, so if you have any questions, please give me a call, and we'd like to see all y'all there, next Monday night, it's gonna be a celebration, and, uh, we appreciate everything y'all do. Anybody got any questions?
Thanks, Ken, appreciate what you do out there. Uh, as our C A, Ms. Lisa's not reasonable, even if you're a girl, you can learn. Any questions regarding, probably let us know, get those to her. Parks Commission, Mrs. Bell is here, City Council.
Any questions, I think we're doing okay.
All right. Any questions, more of the court, gentlemen? Mr. Brown is here.
I did have a, I did have something I, for a couple months, I wanted to stick with you, but it's now the time, was it, uh, uh, in November two thousand sixteen, amendment ninety-eight, the Arkansas Medical Marijuana, and then the past, Arkansas over the commission was then set up, and it's meant for patients of the accident. What I want to talk about in, you know, this region, what I put together, was what it played means to the cities across, across the state. The Arkansas Medical Marijuana Commission sets forth rules and regulations related to application and our implementation for those interested in applying for either dispensary or a cultivation facility. The Arkansas Medical Marijuana Commission has set forth further strong rules and regulations for both application and operation of the cultivation facility and dispensary. The requirements to apply are either the cultivation or dispensary requires that. donated finances, well, is operated large entity with the local state regulatory requirements. The operation of either dispensary or cultivation facility will also be highly regulated. The state mandates a rule governing not only the size or location of the facility, but also the security, processing, and administration requirements. In reference to cities, small to large, the commission sets geographic regulations and enforces them through ABC or iPaulBergers Control. A cultivation facility must be three thousand foot from a school, church, or a bakery. The regulation has also set up a fifteen-hundred-foot limitation from either the same, or from the same entities for dispensaries. I'll stop there and tell you that in Greenwood, Arkansas, it's, having looked at the three thousand foot and fifteen hundred foot, it's nearly impossible for there to be a dispensary or a, or a growth facility, cultivation inside the city under the Greenwood. I mean, there may very well be, and that's the reason I want to give to you all the information I can about it, but I don't know whether there is. While there are many other very detailed rules and regulations for operation, application of these businesses, there are very few that apply directly to cities and zoning. So what I'm saying there is that they just didn't set aside truly what you would do as a body, and maybe they will later in amendments. I don't know. The marijuana amendment does not prohibit a city to enact reasonable zoning regulations related to cultivation and dispensaries, provided that those zoning regulations are the same as for a retail pharmacy. Has to be a retail pharmacy. Wherever a retail pharmacy might be, there also could be a dispensary, as long as that fifteen-hundred-foot doesn't disqualify. Amendment does not, however, allow a city to prohibit the operation of either cultivation or dispensary facilities. Furthermore, the sale of medical marijuana is packed full of the state and cities at the same rate as other goods. In the state, there's five cultivation, but there's only five cultivation facilities. There's eight dispensary zones, four of the zones, or a third, a total of thirty-two around the state. So, if there's any questions, I'll try to answer some of those questions. I did, I did, and Mariner, I talked about this, but Mayor Baxter and Mulberry actually pursued and ended up on the front of the Southwest Times to pursue trying to bring a colored, speaking of dispensary in this town. Any questions? Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Michael, I don't think he's here for the meeting. Big to you. Let's see. Mark Jacob, Herman. Our work, our team, Mr. Reddick, you submitted a report. Oh, there you go. You did. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Reddick? Okay, we'll move on. I'm going to slip in there real quick, because I actually intended to do it a while ago, but I'm going to do it real quick. And I want to thank the everyone publicly for your support, your cards, your letters, your food. Keep the food coming, that's fine. On behalf of my dad passing last week, very much appreciated, so I'm going to miss him for a long time. So thank you for that. Citizen forum, and if you weren't aware, the citizen forum signup sheet, we have it. I do have two gentlemen that have signed up tonight, and if you did not get to sign up, we would still honor and let you talk this evening. But first of all, on the list, Michael Buck, James Burgess, speak. There he is.
I'm sorry, a little hard here.
That's okay. I'm not talking as loud as I usually do tonight.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I want to, first of all, in addressing you as my counsel, I want to thank you for the good job that you've done, the good service that you've given our community. I'm proud of our good town. It's a good place to live and to raise a family. I'd like the council to help keep our community a good community. I'd like to ask you to keep us alcohol-free and reject the application to open an establishment to serve liquor. I have three reasons that I'll present very quickly to you for making this request. Number one, I believe that this is a move to open the door to other things that we do not want in our community. Once we bring in alcohol, I'm sure there are going to be those that want to bring in marijuana. They want to bring in gambling, casinos, and other unwanted things in our community. Number two, the statement has been made that we're not going to grow unless we have alcohol sales, and that's just not true. Let us look at some growth patterns in a town that's had alcohol for many years, and I refer to Fort Smith, in comparison to our growth here. In 1950, the population in Fort Smith was forty-four thousand. Now, these are approximate numbers, but I think they're very close. Greenwood had sixteen hundred and thirty-four people. In 1970, Fort Smith had sixty-two thousand people. Greenwood had two thousand thirty-two. In 1990, Fort Smith had seventy-two thousand. Greenwood had four thousand three hundred and eighty-six. In 2016, Fort Smith has grown to eighty-eight thousand. Greenwood population, at least on the smartphone, was listed at nine thousand three hundred and sixty-two. But what I want to point out is that Fort Smith, from seventy to ninety, had twenty percent, or approximately twenty percent, growth. Greenwood had one hundred percent growth, no alcohol sales, just a good place to live. From 1990 to 2016, Fort Smith grew from seventy-two thousand to eighty-eight thousand, approximately twenty-two percent growth. Greenwood had approximately two hundred, well over two hundred percent growth. Now, we don't have to have that, and I, I think that that is not an argument. We're going to continue to grow. Greenwood has had some adversity over the years. I came here in 1959, fresh out of dental school, started practicing dentistry. Borrowed a lot of money to get started, and it wasn't but just a short time, we lost to Greenwood Creamery. Now, that was an organization that hired probably twelve or fifteen men, but they bought milk from all over the community, and it was important to Greenwood. They went out, craft took them out. Well, I thought that was bad, but the first thing I knew, Greenwood fixture plant out there burnt down to the ground, it employed twelve or fifteen people. That was the only industry intact. Camp Chaffey closed. The mines shut down, and I thought, my goodness, what's going to happen next? But you know Greenwood bounced back. And then in 1968, the tornado just completely wiped out the town. People were killed, injured, people lost their homes, and people were saying Greenwood can't come back, but they did. And I believe that they'll continue to come back, and with your help and your guidance. And I'll tell you the reason Greenwood is a good place to live is because we have good governance. We have good services, fire and ambulance, and all of the services that you want, like people would need and have. And so it's a good place, and I suspect the school may have had as much to do with our continuing growth as anything, because we have a wonderful system. And I'd like to see us grow, and I, I don't want to hurt anyone, and I'm not mad at anyone, and I'll love you all if you don't agree with me, but I plead with you to listen to me. I have lived through the times when Greenwood, Hackett, and the towns around it were wet, and I'm telling you, it wasn't a good experience. I can remember things that happened, and I'd like to tell you some of them, but I don't take time. But going on for reason number three, and I think that this is a reason that you need to listen to very carefully. The third reason that you should reject this request is because the citizens of the Greenwood District voted for a dry county, a dry, dry community. I believe the people have spoken. I believe the majority of our citizens still want it that way. Like I say, I hold no hard feelings toward the man that's making the request. I, I wish him the best. I hope he can serve good food and just do well, but not have alcohol. I worry about, for example, those people that are in that institution right next to Wrighton Church. Going over there, and I don't think he can turn them down if they want like food and drink in his place business. We have problems with, I always tell you honestly, in the church there, and yet, we don't want to kick them out, run them off. We want to help them, but it's difficult to help. I hope that you will consider these. I feel that I personally must take this thing. May God bless America. May God bless Greenwood. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doc Burgess. Next to sign up on the list is Mr. Joshua Miles.
First, I'd like to thank you, you know, the president, that's the only thing. The facts are, he's right. Alcohol will not build your town. That's the fact. Alcohol, the statement that was stated that we don't have alcohol here, folks, it's already here. It's in your houses, it's in your fridge, it's in your garage. That's, that's the fact. The only thing we're doing by limiting the sale of that product within our town is hurting ourselves. See, if we don't collect the taxes from, from the alcohol sales, then we're not strengthening our infrastructure. See, as, as middle-aged folks, we have to worry about the next generation. We don't have to worry about Rod, or AC, or Josh Miles, or maybe even Tim. We have to worry about the next generation. Our concern is them. I, I'm pretty much on the same page as Dr. Burgess. Mind you, they are Christian values, state that, hmm, I don't know what to do, I don't know what to say, and I'm unsure. I was reminded between the last time I was here and this time I was here about a situation that I seem to comply with. Freaks me out. Scared me. And I said, what if I'd been you? What if I would be you? Would you still want to do it? Would you still vote for it? And I sit there, probably four hours, didn't call nobody, didn't text nobody, and I thought to myself, and I said, I'm concerned about my community, about the growth of my community. Every time I've been to one of these meetings, and I've heard costs, 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 it's all heard. One, one department needing this, one department needing this, one department needing this, one department needing this, that's all I've ever heard. To me, this is, is a tax issue, a million-dollar community. I've got nothing but respect for guys like Fred Kingslow. I've got nothing but respect for guys like Dr. Burgess, nothing but respect. I think that we are doing our community a service by allowing a private club to be here, not even if it wasn't my own business. I believe I agree with Dr. Burgess. I never want a liquor store here. If that's your motive, I ask you to vote no. I never want a bar here. If that's your motive, I ask you to vote no. I believe that people do want to be able to drink a Bud Light at a football game. I believe that people do want to have a mixed drink on Friday night, but I believe that it needs to be a regulated environment. My business proposes that there be a limit. We're not going to serve you to, to, to get drunk. I won't have it. So that's, that's pretty much it, guys. I could go on for hours. Like I said, if you want a bar or a liquor store, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. We have an ordinance that Mr. Hamby has sent over, I think, on your behalf.
Yes.
Mr. Hamby's not here tonight, so I would normally let him add it to the agenda of the council, so if they can do that, he's not here to do that, so I'm kind of pushing him, I guess, to make sure that you're aware of that, so we can, you want that to add to the agenda tomorrow. Ask about that. And by the way, I'm sorry, before I do that. Yes, sir.
I didn't know if I was supposed to ask that. Also, I was told that I could ask that that be heard immediately instead of having to wait till Agenda 15.
Okay.
I know that was a question I could ask.
So you're requesting that be added?
I request that it be added, also, you're requesting that it be heard immediately. Me and Dr. Burgess want to go over there.
Okay. So that is the question, Mr. Miles. Council, have any thoughts on that? And we are. Number six, number one layer. Actually, it would have been number eight. We have two others that we have to add from the previous, from the meeting this morning, so it would have been number eight, if it's at the bottom. Do we have number six and seven yet? That's correct. Which, we're actually kind of, you know, we're in the town. The end of this is now, yeah. And, well, the only thing I was going to say, is there anybody else that wants to speak on this item, this particular item or any other? Yes, sir.
Could I add a few things to that?
Absolutely. If you come, if you come to the mic, please just state your name and address.
My name is Bruce Fines, thirteen and nine, South Port Lane, Miami. Owner operating the TGI Friday's in Fort Smith, in Palm Lake. And I think, I wanted to help out tonight, because I think I can see it from, from both sides. I just want, I've been through this. I've been through it in Fort Smith, and I've been through it in Palm Lake, and I think, I've heard a lot of good things so far tonight, but I think a couple of important things that we learned, is it's incredibly divisive either way. So that's something, yeah, and the whole thing about America is, you know, usually the people get to decide what they want and what they don't want. I, I have no idea, but that's one thing I'd say to Josh is, and to me, I don't have a problem with it, but, you know, it's going to, it would be really hard to make it work if fifty percent of the people don't want it. Percent of it, it'd be hard for him to be successful. I know that as far as taxes go, we pay a five percent tax in Fort Smith and a three percent tax in Palm Lake, but you, and you start thinking that everybody's very split, being eighty percent, twenty percent. From a dollar standpoint, yes, that does add a lot. But, yeah, I also come from a Christian family. I have, I have kids, I have, I mean, and that's, you know, one thing I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, it is, it can be really good, it can also be a bit, it can be very divisive. One thing we do is we, we train our employees on how to serve people, how much to serve people. We've, we've got an incredible amount of online classes that they have to give her. So it's not just a, you know, we card anyone that appears to be under eighty to forty. And it is something, it's kind of, oh, it's something, if it passed, I would be interested in putting something here, not a bar, but something here. Where, where it becomes a competitive disadvantage is there's five people who want to go out to eat, one of them wants to go there, and so there's nothing here for them. So one of the busiest vehicle brands in, in America is right on the other side of the dry county. So where do a lot of people go? They go there. Yeah, I'm not here to say you should do it or you shouldn't do it. You know, I would just like to provide some, some input on, it, it, it's a tough road to go down. And I think, you know, Dr. Burgess, I think, you know, he said. And I think, you know, Dr. Burgess, I think, uh, you know, he said, most people don't want to hear, I think it's pretty easy to find out where it stands, because as a business owner, you wouldn't want to put something here that was that divisive. You know, it, it, I mean, say seventy percent of the people don't want it here. I wouldn't want to bring a business here that, that I was only going to serve thirty percent for anything. If it was the other way around, there would be some interest, but, um, yeah, it's something, I'm, I'm, this is the first meeting I've ever been to, but we've got a, a store in Conway. And one of the things that really makes Conway so successful versus Wolf Smith is, uh, it's completely different from alcohol. If you guys haven't played with this before, you might have seen some term in ball field, soccer, baseball, anything like that, I mean, our Conway store explodes from that. Which is a big disadvantage for Wolf Smith store, uh, just wanted to throw that in. I don't know if anyone has any questions afterwards, I've been through both sides, we've got a private club in Conway, we've got liquor I'll drink in Wolf Smith, I've been through all.
You mentioned taxes, so you're paying five percent additional, and Fort Smith, which in addition to, uh, Fort Smith doesn't have an A and P tax, but so additional to the just state sales tax, you're paying five percent. And that references back to, there's a
Yeah, we're fourteen to two five, so it's what, nine point two five plus?
Supplemental tax that the state Arkansas allows for people to put on restaurants, private, uh, on premises. And that's a three dash nine dash two oh five, that's what you're referring to.
We, we write this, five percent tax to the city of Wolf Smith there.
And state max is even higher. Conway's got three percent on.
And, and both of those taxes go, you know, like the Conway, of the A and P tax, my partners on the A and P committee in Conway, you know, that's how they build all people.
And in Conway, the mixed drinks tax is in addition to that A and P tax that Conway adds. So it's getting pretty expensive in Conway, is it?
Absolutely, it's expensive in, in Fort Smith, I mean, when you start looking at a twenty-four percent tax, it is expensive, but at least the option is there, you know? I mean, some part of it's in Fort Smith for ten dollars, you know, to refer to that with taxes. Really, very rarely do we have a complaint, and if I do, I And that's the great thing about America and everything, and we love things in, right? I mean, there, I can sit up here and say what I like or what I don't like, it's really up to the people to decide. You know, I, I wouldn't want to bring anything here that angry people are upset with during, I mean, you just don't have to make it anyway. And Greenwood might not be ready, but they might, I think that's the best way to find out, we failed, I think, four times in Fort Smith when we first put our Fort Smith system. We failed four times to try to sell alcohol to some people. And then eventually the people voted, same thing in Conway, we were the first store to serve liquor in Conway. People that wanted, they helped one, I, I guess that's my point is that they can, they can tell you what they think pretty strongly about, about voting, and I, I would imagine they would probably be to you vote now.
Is your owner and part owner, please?
Excuse me?
Your owner, part owner?
Owner operator, so I've got partners in the
I'm okay. So you live there in Greenwood?
I, I live just outside of Greenwood, my kids go to school in Greenwood. Yeah, I mean, I've, I've talked with, I do a lot of work with legal and for the police, you know, many things, and, you know, I'm sure I, I'd love to put something in town with her without alcohol, eventually I'd like to. The question, I think, is the same thing for Josh would be, are you going to be supportive enough? If you look around, how many places coming and go out of this, it's coming and go out of this, so I think that's the competitive, that's, that's the major competitive reason is you go to vehicle brands, you say, I'm not, I'm just using that because that's a reference point for me, but if you go there on Sunday, you know, like people are watching the game because one guy on the beer. It's tough to do, it's very tough to do.
When y'all were doing it in Fort Smith and Conway, you were doing the same thing, you applied for non-precious consumption, and Arkansas paid law for private club?
Yes.
Both places?
We still have a private club in Conway. We went many years without being able to set up on something in Fort Smith, until we came to their backyard.
Conway, still the same?
We are a private club, but they, uh, they had just a few years ago where we could serve, uh, something. You know, that's something, I, I don't know how much say that you guys have over things, I, I know a lot of people in ABC would work really close to them to make sure that we're Yeah, our goal is not to get somebody drunk and make sure they don't make it home safely, you know, our, our goal is just to, to, to be able to provide a fun atmosphere and, you know, obviously make a little bit of money. But, uh, you know, nobody makes money not getting people hurt, so I think safety, you know, and if that does work, yeah, I think safety is another one concern that we have. You know, that's another thing that I can speak for a long time, and that is just all of our policies, and I'd be happy to share that with anyone if you guys ever get to that point and tell people I'm not going to. That's all I have, thank you for the time, if you have any questions, I'll, I'll hang around afterward.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir?
I, I don't want to get to the point that people are going to vote on this, uh, I fairly believe that they would vote for alcohol sales here, in my personal opinion. And if we get to that point that you're not stopping a liquor store and you're not stopping a bar, sure, you can regulate where they are, but you're not stopping them from being here. Folks, I don't want to be there, I don't want a liquor store here, I don't want a bar here, and maybe y'all do, I don't. I think you give somebody the option that they can go, go to a place, uh, in a controlled environment, that has to be intelligent enough, uh, to be able to regulate what they get. Uh, and let them go back home if they want to finish it off that way. That's my personal opinion, I, guys, I don't think none of us want a liquor store here, that's my personal opinion, maybe we're wrong, but we don't want to put our citizens to the point of having to vote for this. You don't want to do it, that's my personal opinion, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this matter or any other matter? Thank you. Uh, agenda additions, which we are, let me, we have five on your agenda, we decided to add number six as a new bond report from Mr. Derry, Chief Parker Fraser. And then number seven is the state aid project, we have some good news from those folks in highway department, and we'll put down street department on that. And we have a number, a request from, uh, Mr. Niles to add the ordinance, and he's also requested that we, if you seek that to do that, to maybe move it to the top of that list. Thoughts on that, council? I'd be kind of mean to do it to the top of the list. Okay, 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 no objections to do that, then, uh, that ordinance, uh, will be moved to number one, and everything will move down, so the state aid project will be moved to the top. I'm at school in Arkansas, so I'm good with mine, I'm working right here.
So old business is still number one?
Uh, yes, sir. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Old business, yes, I'm sorry, I, I rag on myself, imagine it. It'll be number two, how's that?
It's all, I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah. Okay, so we will move right into old business.
Commercial guidelines.
Commercial guidelines, well. I'm not going to rag myself anymore.
Hi, Eric Council, Mr. Derry, uh, very nice to, uh, talk about the market guideline, I just got this copy, uh, four thirty this afternoon showing the changes on it. I know last month we, uh, we looked at a couple of them on, uh, oh, page four. Section B, three and four, and we decided that that would probably be good if we left that in there.
I thought we decided to remove it.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, excuse me?
Remove the strap.
Remove, yeah.
So I mean, this, we just found out online that this copy he sent, and that I sent you, it's not the copy you, that Chris doesn't have. So you can use my copy that was made?
Well, is there more?
Yeah, he, he did, I don't know what happened, but this is the one that he brought and said
So what you have does not reflect what we talked about?
So use that one. What's in our budget going to look at?
Don't forget.
One, yeah, use the one ten eighty.
Let's, let's try this on page, uh, seven, where it asks if they wanted to, uh, uh, make sure that it confirms our, uh, current zoning. No problem there, you know, we will confirm everything that confirms our zoning, but the, uh, the one on page twenty where it wants to know if we want to add, uh, a, a bigger percentage of high-quality materials, like fifty percent, the, uh, we've been using twenty-five percent, and that's what you see on most buildings around here, of the brick, wainscot, and I think, in some cases, especially, uh, businesses that are privately owned, I think asking for more is, uh, increasing the, the expense to them to build in Greenwood, and I'd rather leave it at twenty-five percent. Now, those are the only changes except for the, the every, every kind of change guidelines for currents, is there something else that you're looking at, Rod? We had one on here where it wanted to add stone, and there's, there's no problem with that either.
So inserting stone, brick, comma, stone, comma, wood, stucco?
Yeah, we'll pay for that.
That's on page one.
Yeah, I, you know, that, that's no problem there, because I think stone was just, uh, uh, left out because, you know, it wasn't considered a time, but it could be.
So right now, there, there's not a requirement for a percentage of high-quality materials?
Yes, brick.
There, there is a requirement of twenty-five percent?
Yes. But that's a minimum.
Now, where's that at?
Right there in the red, that red box.
Well, I see that, that the red box, I don't see really somewhere where it says actually twenty-five percent is the, is the minimum. Anywhere in here.
Well, we can add that to
Well, we can add it to H.
And I mean, it is the, I'm saying, the wainscoting, is that really considered like twenty-five percent, or is it like, you know, that's a
A fourth of, you know, basically a fourth of a, of the front of the building.
Only the front?
Yes.
And that's where we ended up with our department?
What, what we do is on the visible side from the street, I'll put it that way. So we, we can add that to a twenty-five percent on, on a visible, uh, surface from the street, if that's all right.
Your notice says on each elevation.
Is that something I wrote that you can read?
Well, it's in a lock.
Okay.
Where it's coming out.
Oh, on each elevation, so I, I see, so each side?
Yeah.
Which is where, you know, Lance and I agreed with Lance when he did the other, it should have been on the other side.
But what about visible elevation, I mean?
I, I buy everything visible, you know?
Because the backside of buildings, you know, uh,
The whole elevation.
We require screening, you know, for example, uh, high-cost is, uh, building up there where the new shipwreck has come in, you know, we require screening in there, so you can't get back to the building, so, you know, I don't think in those cases we
How do we define visible, I mean, maybe you can say fifty percent?
Funny said, visible from the street elevation.
But, but I mean, is that one hundred percent visible, or you say, well, there's, it's landscaped and there's something in front of it that's not really visible? I mean, how do you define visible?
We put on there, uh, visible from the street unless otherwise screened.
Visible from
Unless otherwise what?
Screened, yeah. You know, like privacy fence or, well, well, our cage is or something like that.
You can see a lot of things, I mean, depending on your angle from the street, but if you just say just a part of the back wall, is that visible?
It's just like that area he's talking about where this new shipwreck place come in, just the fact that that got allowed, that that was allowed to be built perpendicular to the high tins spurs, is probably a huge mistake.
So how do we prevent that from here?
Well, I mean, I understand it's a property issue, but we shouldn't, I mean, it shouldn't be, just like AT&T store, that should be replacing, that way you, we eliminate street viewing for these elevations in the back-to-back, and that's it. I mean, that's something we have more of, but I don't know if that's anything kind of good.
So how, how do we prevent that from happening in here?
Well, they, uh, you know, normally when somebody comes in with an idea, uh, to the planning department, you know, and it's, and it's, uh, forwarded to the planning commission, those are the things that they look at, is the, the property, how you could position it, the, uh, building from the property, I mean, AC's been there, and he knows how, how the, uh, it goes. And in case of high cost, you know, he had a long, narrow lot, and to build, uh, uh, a long tin spur, he would have probably had, only built two bi-, uh, two buildings or two offices. The rest of the property would have been wasted, and so the, the odds of somebody trying to put that kind of investment for that small of a, a building is, uh, uh, you know, we're looking at the same thing on down the road where, uh, Dr. Johnson's grandmother had that property, you know, there's a proposal, uh, from Michael and, and the Johnsons of doing a, a strip shopping center. Well, it will be a L shape, but he will have that, that side there, they'll, you know, the back side will be visible from, uh, tin spurn, and in that case, they would require, uh, screening or something.
I don't know what he's talking about, it just doesn't look good coming in, just look at it, it just looks attractive.
Well, the building shop, it's a L shape, but that's not the, this seems reasonable, and always, even before I was sitting up here, I thought that the positive that thing was that way for the street.
Well, uh, and, you know, I still think that, you know, if it's being visible from the street, I think that's what we need, that should have a, uh, need to decide in back, you know, so I think, we have a lot like that that's long and narrow, like that, that makes it, if they're wanting to develop that, and they know that, that's what it's going to have to do, and I think, you know, the back side should be, uh, dressed up just like the front side, and it's going to be visible, because to me, sometimes the, the screen can, can become dilapidating, you know, sometimes quicker than, you know, the building.
Well, logistically though, on a place like Olympia, you get all your power and air conditioning units and stuff, and whatever, so you almost can't make it look like the other three sides, with windows and glass doors, but, but, well, privacy fence, I understand, is the only way to go, or shrubbery, or however you want to do it, but, I mean, I was just hitting it off the butt beforehand, so if you can't do it perpendicular, I, I give anyway to a L shape perpendicular, I mean, if that's your property, then you got to just figure out what you want to do, I mean, there's really only two offices in there anyway, because that one I wrote for about three months.
I mean, maybe if you look at, uh, uh, you look at Walgreens, you look at Tractor Supply, uh,
Yeah.
You know, they, they pretty much, you know, did around the, the whole building, you know, and it's, uh, they're not, they're not placing it in the
Really, they've done the side that's not visible.
And, uh, yeah, they've done, you know, and the side is not visible, but I mean, the, the maintenance certainly did, you know, all three sides.
You know, we have the, the building up there, Niles was, uh, going to put his place, if he gets the opportunity, he would be able to build it up from the end, like the, the barbecue place is, both of the backs of those, you know, are, uh, where you can see them from the street, but, uh, those were built sometime ago, and, and so therefore they weren't required for screenings there, but now, they are required for screenings.
So you're all happy with the twenty-five percent?
I would like to see it higher.
I would like to see it higher.
You know, for example, the, the, uh, Greenwood, uh, body shop up there, I think they're about twenty-five percent, if you're there, you know, I'm pretty sure it's in Greenwood now.
I'm waiting for the mayor to bring you many given the dollars we do on that, preventing
I mean, that's what, that's what you're looking at, is the twenty-five percent of the building, like, and that's for a, for a
For a body shop, that's, that's a good, yeah. I think, Rod, if you said fifty percent, I mean, if you think about what we just did at the street department, if you say fifty percent of that front elevation, it says, you got to put brick halfway up the wall, which is not a lot of body.
They do a whole section and then the other's not as high quality, I mean, they can They do a whole section, and then others not, it's high quality, I mean, architects move things around and make things look a different way, it's just their job.
I mean, I assume the standard...
Fifty percent's a little high, but I'd like to move it up to about thirty-five percent.
If you look at the cost that the, uh, the street department would have been...
All we, all we on our ass, if we moved it up to thirty-five percent, I don't have a problem with this plan. I still don't know how the street department got past this one real good, so, I don't, I don't...
Well, and I agree that the, you know, Greenwood, you know, collision, you know, I mean, they did a good job, like, it, it looks nice and stuff, but, but to me, uh, it can also be interpreted in different ways, you know, if you just say, we're going to just do, you know, like I'm saying, twenty-five percent, make it put, you know, style that doesn't look as good as Greenwood, you know, collision did.
Okay, whatever you want to do, I work with these people and their budgets when they're coming in and they're looking at property and, and, you know, but, high budgets and, and, uh, you know, the, uh, the anytime fitness was real close on, on their budget, if they'd been, if we, if there'd been more expense there, it probably wouldn't have.
Yeah. If, if I can interject a little bit, I would want council to always remember too, and I'm not saying, I, I hate the whole, we're harder than Folsmith to build, I hate, I mean, I just hate that, and we've talked about that for a long time, and way before I ever got here, but I would urge you to make sure that we don't... Come, that, that doesn't come true, that we're not...
We're not hard to approach.
I, I know, but we hear that, and if, and if we're doing more...
The building does not require any level of twenty-five percent.
I just always want to make sure that we're...
On there, right. I mean, you go down Ryerson Avenue, you look at twenty-five percent.
They have a lot of other requirements, you know.
Yep.
Big old Brady's added parking spots, and I was talking to them the other day, and they said they required fourteen shrub, fourteen shrubs to be camp, to be placed in there for just the two, two additional, uh, parking spots, and they said, may I come out and counter?
And, and we were recently complimented, I don't know, I say we, you, council in the city, who was Sturteich with me or somewhere, out and about, and I think it was out of AT or Dollar Tree, and that gentleman there was very complimentary and out there, he was easy to work with, and the climbers were standard, and nobody didn't have to guess that and all that stuff, so...
Uh, twenty-five percent doesn't feel broke to you?
Does it feel broke?
Doesn't. It doesn't feel like that's broken to me, I mean, I think to some points, these people aren't that, but...
And, and again, that twenty-five percent minimum, you know, we can look at, at a building, at the planning commission, and say, we would like to have the brick up to this point, which is going to be thirty percent, and, but we can't go below twenty-five.
If somebody goes to a twenty-five thousand seat concert, maybe you'd have them up a little higher.
I said they were building, you know, a thirty-foot wall, to some point, I think the planning commission, I look at that, so that... Four-foot brick on that thirty-foot wall, and go look, Rod, you need to make this...
Yeah, that'd look terrible, we'd go to yellow.
But I think that's what we're saying.
They just got to do it, though, that's the problem. They just got to do it, because that's the problem, I don't make sense, I don't look if they don't make the business. I, I think it ought to be raised a little bit, I think thirty-five percent, like, Lance, agreement, AC's in agreement.
Is this true? Our twenty-five could make your, your whole, whole, your hands out and your, your...
I'm fine with twenty-five, but I'm not dogmatic, I think.
What else do we have, Sam?
That's about the only thing on my copy I had, unless you, unless you had something else on there, Rod.
We, we're referring the trees, or the, to the, uh...
The shrubs, you know, the most rip, that's, that's not a issue.
Right. But in here, we were going to refer somewhere to the, uh, landscape ordinance.
You got fifteen, you got a lot of chicken and thread.
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Section seven.
Can I ask what the planning, what's the planning commission say about all that?
Well, planning commission, what, that did the original document, uh, you know, we spent about a year.
Have they seen all these edits?
No.
Sounds practical.
What, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that, that the, the edits, the edits, you know, the twenty-five percent, things like that, uh, this is something that we're already doing, all we would be doing is putting it in the, in the new document, that, uh, minimum of twenty-five percent, uh, unless, visible from the street, unless, uh, screened, uh, privacy fence or, or shrubbery, something like that, uh, the planning commission type will have a problem with it, but, you know, some of the, uh, and, and this might be something that we want to say, okay, here's what we want to do, and send it back to the planning commission, but, you know, they worked for about a year on this document, and we had, you know, had a part with, just one of the planning commissioners, he's an architect, and he, you know, he drew this up and said, you know, this is what we want, so...
Y'all want to table, send it back?
Well, they moved down thirty-five percent.
Well, I'd say, you know, I, I kind of take it that I, I don't think they want to do, go thirty.
More than twenty-five, go a hundred.
I, I think twenty-five percent minimum is, is what they...
Well, I guess...
Your tree must have been in them two-inch calpers, but it's not a tree that's...
I think we decided to refer it to the landscape ordinance.
Well, we need to get these things going and...
But I guess that does concern me, though, that, that, that the changes that have been made have not really, have just gone through the planning commission, and I guess that's, I, I know, while there's probably consensus, you know, with that, but...
There are a lot of things the planning commission doesn't go through us.
Well, that's true too, but I, but, but I think that, to me, I think it really needs to, uh, to go back through them and they don't really look at it.
Well, I agree. Would y'all want to put in a penalty section?
For this bill, or not one? So somebody go out there and build something that's timber roof rusted and all that, and what be any dealing with, going up, good pair of handles?
Oh, yeah. The first thing you do, you know, what do you expect, it wasn't being built, uh, the first, until you get top court order, and they've had you that correctly.
So there's penalty, all you have to do is get fifty.
And if you had a loan, you don't get a certificate of occupancy, and they won't process your loan without that certificate.
I'm one of those.
Remember, this all started with one word change.
But, but I guess it's because, but, but yes, Michael did, didn't, you know, mark up what, I'll say, but there was a lot of red lines on there, the one last one I saw at the last meeting, and I guess I really wasn't, didn't really think about that, that the planning commission didn't really, not seeing the, the final document as, as we're seeing, but I really would like for them to, to...
Like I said, all the planning commission asked me to do is to change that, uh, guidelines to requirement, because they had some, uh, questions from builders, uh, the fact that, uh, it didn't say that they were required to do it, they said it was a, it was a, a suggestion.
You know, and, and we, we took that, and we ran with it, and we made some other changes, and so I'd like for it to, to really, I would like to say, circle back to them, saying that we're not trying to cir, you know, circumvent them or, or put stuff in there at the, at the end, if they haven't really had a chance to really look over completely and approve it myself.
I can pretend to, you know, we'll be meeting not next month, it'll be after that, and then by the next council meeting, I'm, I'm back to, you know, some...
So we have no problem with tabling it for thirty days and coming back to...
You making a motion to table, Rod?
How many motions you table?
Motion, second, table.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
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 Thank you, thank you, Ms. Brown. Number two, on the, uh, actually, three, new business, all right, no? Yes, it would be, it would be number two, that's right. This is the, uh, alcohol ordinance. Now, if you want to speak...
What's that, talking?
I know.
What are the alcohol ordinance?
Well, ordinance authorizing Josh Niles to application for private club permit pursuant to ECA three-nine, that is two-two, with the alcohol, everything, control, drink, emergency, blow, versus, uh, again, this is to authorize him to pursue permit, not to allow alcohol sales.
So I don't have the opportunity to try?
Sir?
Correct.
To give him the opportunity to apply, that's correct. I know Mr. Brown has some thoughts over will... Somebody else?
Ultimately, what's happened here is, uh, at the risk of taking pole for one of the newspapers, uh, this is just a state chicken now, and we put this back into local government's hands, in the past, a guy would want to do this, he'd go down to the APC with all his layout of his business, how he'd want to sell it, and he would ask around the town for the mayor, the chief of police, entrepreneur, local businessman, philanthropist, whatever, pack of notes down there, letters, and go down to APC, so here's the guys that were for, a bunch of local people that are against it, go down there, there'd be like basically a courtroom situation, and we'd hear virgins and cons, and the APC would ultimately vote oh to five, and it never passed, so, for some reason, that system didn't work for them, I don't know why, uh, I wish the league would hear this and be telling him that he makes the state rip deal, and change that back, but, so, anyway, all that being said, it's just thrown that politics on our lap, where somebody like Doc Burgess, we got to shake his hand next Sunday church, and say, sorry, O D A or N A, or you're welcome, but, you know, this guy's going to get a shot at it, whatever, so, let me know if it's, it's petty on, on the state of Arkansas legislature to make this go back to the local government's hands, but, I just want to give my two cents worth, that's the...
I agree with that comment, and what I would ask is, the fact that it's thrown on our table, what are you asking us to make a decision based upon, you know? I mean, you hear these debates on, on both sides of this, that it's about taxes, or it's not about, you know, is it an economic decision that we're being asked to make, is it a moral decision, you know what I mean, that this has been looking for us to, to cast a vote, representing the people, I mean, you know, Mr. Niles believes if it goes to a vote of the people, they could pass it, uh, Bruce says he doesn't think they would, I don't know whether they would or not, but, as Tim says, we've been put in a position here to represent the vote of the people, I guess, I don't know how we get to a vote of the people, does anybody know that?
I think that Mr. Niles could probably, he, he spoke into the board, and I spoke to an attorney at the board, and so did Mr. Brown, I know, right? And, to my understanding, and that's all it is, is that what Mr. Terry just described is, it was correct before August the first, that, that's how, that's how you, there was no signature, that didn't mean, you know, we weren't going to sign off, that that's, you didn't have to go through this process until after the...
Correct.
What's, I'm sorry?
Correct.
Okay, but now, you, the council, has been put in a position of allowing or disallowing his application after that is done, then, then the same process applies, the posting, the advertisement, and the, not a vote, but a certainly a letters from people, still, still the same procedure that would influence the APC board, is the same procedure that it would be, the only thing that's been stuck in there is, is like you so eloquently said, is that you, the council, has been put in there as a buffer, in my opinion, but what would, what would cause the APC board to, to decline or, or issue his permit, is the same, uh, voice of the people, in the same manner.
So those, uh, even when it goes to the ABC board, they still have, uh, there's still room for, uh, public citizens here, but, you know, whether they are or against it, but the application.
That's correct.
I would, why, my conversation with...
That's what, that's what, go ahead, that's the conversation I had.
Last time, y'all kind of put it to me that I really didn't have a right to plan, and, so I did some checking, and, you know, it, you know, to pass it, looks like it's, it's kind of wide open to any, you know, everywhere, anywhere, whatever, there's no plan, uh, and I, I'm, I'm not going to move forward without a plan, uh, I called Michael Larry at ABC, I know him, he's from here, and I asked him, I said, you know, do we not have a right to plan, and he said, well, absolutely, you got a right to plan, and he said, by the way, y'all spread a lot of misinformation to your newspaper in the business requirements, and I said, well, the newspaper reported what it said, and he said, well, somebody said it with a lot of authority, and he said, there are no business requirements on a private, but, he said, not only can they be right up next to a church or school, which you have a problem with, they can also share space with it, I said, you can have church in the morning and have your block, private club in the evening, uh, he said, so that didn't make a lot of sense, and he's, and I said, well, you're hammering the Greenwood Democrat, and it wasn't their fault, somebody said it in the council meeting, so, he said, you do have a right to plan, and he said, the reason it gets passed to you, he said, all communities are different, and he said, we're looking for your blessing, you know, so, once you've signed the ordinance, you've implied consent, that you're okay with this, that kind of negates people coming up complaining, they want people to come up here and complain right now, so, that's what he's told me.
But they still, they play cannon, they can.
So, I did some more checking, and y'all know, I, I know Michael Larry, but a, a childhood friend of mine, a city attorney in North Little Rock, and y'all all know him, everybody's come to train, and I called Jason, and I said, you know, do I have a right to plan this, and he said, he said, you bear lifting your duty if we did, that's exactly your, that's your role, is to plan, and he said, you should have a plan if you want to move forward with this, he said, it's hard for me to rack my head around it because we have so many problems, because, he said, we've been wet in North Little Rock since probation, he said, without a plan, you know, what are you going to end up with? And I said, well, you know, we got us asking for a sports group, and he said, okay, so you're thinking like a T G I variety, so Chili's, and I said, yep, right, and he said, what about Dooch? And I said, no, and he said, what about taxes or no taxes, what kind of community are you, are we a taxes or no taxes community, he said, because it can happen, he said, you need to have, you need to be in front with your plan, or you're going to be behind, chasing them, trying to catch up, and he said, that's a bad place to be, I agree with that, and that's where I was trying to go in the last meeting, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I'm against passing it, but I'm certainly against passing anything without a plan, I'm not against sending it to the voters and asking them, but still, we need a plan, and I don't mind going through the conversation and putting a plan in place, even when it's not needed, we did that, uh, ten years ago with hotel and hotels, we've got a hotel tax sitting out there for three percent, and someday will be used, I don't mind going through the process of planning right now for a private, for a private, uh, you know, on premise, on premises consumption, but I absolutely do have a right to plan, Jason referred me to, he said, there's actually a case law that came out of Fayetteville, and it was Compost versus C in Fayetteville, and at the end of the case law, it says, nothing shall be construed, this is within chapter nine, on on-premises consumption, nothing shall be construed to limit the power of local governing bodies to regulate and operate, operation of private clubs, so, we absolutely have a right to plan, and it's not me, I mean, it's all of us, uh, you can, Jason suggested, he said, you know, when you go in and start zoning, you go in and start passing things by ordinances, you've kind of limited yourself, you know, it takes three rooms to change the alcohol, three rooms to change it, he said, if, if I were you, he said, I'd probably sit down and start, come up with a resolution, because a resolution can be quickly amended, he said, and give them some guidance when they come to you, you know, a reasonable distance from church, a reasonable distance from nursing, a reasonable distance from the school, you start thinking about all those things, uh, he's, he said, and probably the best thing is having... He said, and probably the best thing is having provide you with a business plan. He said, they can't provide you with a business plan, you're probably doing a favor in the first place. Provide you with a business plan, this is what I plan on do. I'm gonna put up a brick oven pizza, pizzeria in the square of Greenwood, and I'm gonna serve this home crafted beer plus, and all the soft drinks, and that's all I'm doing. And then when he pops up, and I'm gonna be open on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday till ten o'clock. And then when he goes out and gets his short skirts with taxes, and he's over at two o'clock and he's got a band there, you talk to him and say, this is not the plan we approved, we're pulling your privilege license, you're out of business until you go back with the plan that we approved. That make sense to you?
Without an ordinance against taxes, probably.
Yeah, I've got that. But you get, you get my, I understand.
Well, I understand though, every time when somebody wants to help and do a private club, they've got to bring this, this new one. So, this is not like the ordinance where theirs will start lining up with beer trucks and kegs.
I think it is, but I think when you open the door, they're gonna line up.
Okay, and then when the gentleman is back there brings in, thanks month of TGI Fridays, we said, that would have been a process.
All we're, all we're figuring by resolution is giving them guidance. This is what we're most likely to approve.
But ultimately, by state law, this has to be approved.
Sure, he can't go forward until that's approved.
Right.
The right says, we need a resolution on the front side of that, because before you show up with that, here's what the plan is.
He pretty much told us what his business plan is, the football game, that two streets.
So.
Did we have the, the.
It's gonna open anyway, I would assume, he's already got the sign up everything, he's out here in the harbor, we'll be watching football, they're fixing up, he's got one back on that side.
Also, I was.
Relative to the plan, there were some comments made about tax.
Well, that's the other part, so.
There were in our.
If, if we were to allow, it's been suggested to me by these two other attorneys, you don't have taxes, you better get out in front of it, because you'll come and you'll have everybody in their crime line after they've ordered their margarine machines, and you're gonna put me out of business. So, get out there and tax it, put it on state max. And I said, can I direct that money to youth activities? Absolutely. Can I direct that money to youth activity, activities, youth access to schools, and have it directed by the park director commission? He said, absolutely. This is where I'm coming from. I wouldn't move forward with any of this until planning was, was done, was in place. So, the, when you refer to Arkansas state law three dash nine dash two oh five, it refers to what they call an extra income tax, which also includes beer and wine. If, if I'm gonna move forward, we're gonna go to state max, and we're gonna direct that money to youth activities, and put it under the purview of the park director commission to do it through the parks, but you may have votes, and you may not need my vote, so, and y'all may not agree with me, but all that needs to happen before we even entertain the idea of sending something.
Well, I think one of the reasons that we're studying the commercial guidelines is because we went many, many years without.
Without planning.
Without planning. And we did a whole lot of fixing. To the mayor's point, we got a lot of complaints about our rules and regulations because people like to operate without rules and regulations, and it's, it's taken a long time. I mean, Rod has spent a lot of time on the, the planning of the guidelines, and it's, it's gonna matter long term to our city. So, I agree with you, if you don't have a plan, you're being reckless.
I, I certainly agree too with all that planning discussion, that whole thing is very important, and not to slow people, you know, stop in there, but you can get on that plane and give it the tax, all of those things should be in place. But I want to touch back on, and I'm, I'm not, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, or at least what I was clear, that it wasn't Jason, it was the other attorney.
Michael Eric.
Michael, that I had a discussion with, that, and maybe you didn't say this, but I want to make sure that it's, that we agree, or I mean, whatever, here's what I heard him say, is that if the council chooses to allow Mr. Niles to move forward with his application, that the board, ABC board, would see that as, you're okay with it, and they're gonna approve it, and that's that. I went as far as asking Mr., again, it's left attorney, what level of disagreement, or what does it take to stop, you know, you know, because there is no, nobody says, you know, once he's allowed by council approval to apply for a private club license, and he does that, and then the board, what, what is it that stops that? You know, and I asked him, I don't know, if Damian was in the office or not, but I asked him that specifically, and he said, well, there isn't, there is no benchmark. He said, and I quote, if fifty percent of Greenwood residents called us, I'm pretty sure the board would not approve. So, I just want to make sure that you weren't saying, if the council just allowed him to do it, that the board would look at that and go, well, we're gonna give it to him because, because the council says so.
Would not.
I mean, that's, to my, to my understanding, is he goes right back to the same, and I mean, I'm not, I won't.
There's a little bit of grandstanding, Lord Ross, but that's not exactly how we agree all. He knows that.
Well, okay, I just want to clarify that, so, that people understand what you, the council, is deciding upon, and that it's not a done deal.
It's not a done deal, we represent citizens of Greenwood, and we are their representatives, we're the ones that they come to.
But if you turn it around, we know, and I've voted on things myself, that doesn't, doesn't necessarily represent all my friends or constituents, if you will. So, does you necessarily, let's just say, you voted, you voted for it, okay, for him to be allowed to apply, and then tomorrow, next week, when it's posted in the paper, and it has to be, you have to follow that procedure, you have to put it on your building, and then he has to write a paper, and I think, is it sixty days or thirty?
I think it's starting at fifty six.
I, I think it's thirty, whatever that timing of it is, the, those that are against it will rise, and as they should, because that's what America's about, and I don't mean to sound like I don't think anybody, but even though you voted in it, voted to let him, let him try it, you know what I mean? I hope the board, because that's what I was told, I, I hope, I hope it's correct.
Yeah, there's no guarantees when passed, there's no guarantee.
One call from Will Dawson, Chief Dawson, to say, this is, even though he may be silent or he may not during this process, and if he called after it, the fact that you guys allowed him to apply, and the chief of police calls and says, this is horrible for City Greenwood, I think that, I think that board is gonna certainly take that into account. Does that make sense, or whatever?
It makes sense, and there's no guarantee that they, there's one guarantee he's gonna be planning in place.
Watch that.
But I'll, I'll say this, Rod, to your point, we owe it to Mr. Niles, and anybody else like him to have a plan. When he walks in here and says, I wanna open this restaurant, and I wanna serve alcohol, we should have something to hand him that says, this is how this is gonna go, because he's in a position right now to beat that guy, because we don't have a plan. We ought to have a plan, for the, the next guy that walks in the door, here it is, this is how this works.
And whether it's alcohol sales, or.
Or marijuana, whatever that is.
Even something a lot less, a sports complex. If we're gonna build a sports complex, then we're in iron, you know, somebody else is coming near to Greenwood to do it, we want to, we need to set some rules and guidelines for that sports complex not to have, or to, well, Hooters teams out there playing, you know what I mean? I mean, there's gotta be some rules and regulations.
For establishment, if it's, if it's private, you should have plans for that.
I'm sorry, what?
Tattoo parlor. We should have a.
It's a.
A plan up there?
It's a tattoo parlor, not what they're doing, I don't know if there's, I don't know, I'm not sure.
I don't know what we're doing in the sports bar. I don't know what we're doing in the sports bar, too.
I don't know, but they, okay, I'm sure. But yeah, I guess, I guess, yeah, I mean, if you're approving a business in City Greenwood, maybe your business plan isn't automatic, I don't know, setting.
We didn't approve that business, we never came to this panel.
Didn't have to.
Right.
Right.
He made current supervision, like many, you know, the partial guidelines we were just looking at.
We never, we never, you know, that's it, that's one of the things, go from the planning mission to.
He was within the definition of the box.
The guidelines that are already set, he met.
And as long as he's within that box, and he was at his twenty-five percent.
There you go.
And then he, he's good to go, but he steps outside of that, he goes to the board of adjustments, the planning commission, and he's got to get approved, if, if he's outside of, he's well outside.
But the types of businesses are regulated in are not.
And, and by the way, that, that particular business, we, we did get a call through the city hall, someone assumed we had a ordinance in place to keep a quote-unquote tattoo parlor from within the city limits, and we looked, and we could find that, so.
The tassels are regulated in zero one dash two four.
Right. That's true.
Because I've finished you.
I was really aware.
And I was different.
I have a few things, I'm sorry for taking everybody's time, I'm really, I'm really sorry. I, I believe you, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but this ain't seen it around Greenwood, everybody's pretty live, and this is, this is in the newspaper, in Southwest Times, and in both newspapers here. Your public is chosen, Mr. Powell, there's only two guys here, maybe even Dr. Purvis. So, if you're going from a public space standpoint, what the people think, the people have spoken, the people would be here, that's just a fact. I'm not trying to disrespect you in any way, shape, or form, what I would ask you, Mr. Powell, is, what's your plan? And what have you done in the last thirty days to ensure us a safer Greenwood?
I don't mind if the council wants me to put the plan together, but, you know, in the end, I think Greenwood's fine the way it is.
Once again, Mr. Powell, what have you done in the last thirty days to ensure us a safer Greenwood?
What, what does that have to do with your establishment?
Has a lot to do with your establishment, you're speaking about regulations and planning, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, it sounds like you made a bunch of phone calls and I'm putting you mind to it.
And I'm putting mine into it?
Yeah, you, what's your plan?
I make phone calls to make sure I.
What's your plan, though?
I do not have, I've got the framework.
So, here's, you're before me, and the rest of the council, and the rest of the public, no plan, but you talk about it, but you've had thirty days, put something together, sometimes suggest me something. If anything, you're not only failing me as a citizen, you're failing your community, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but that's just the fact that you have no plan.
When I'm failing you as a citizen, are you a citizen?
Absolutely.
Where do you live?
Three thirteen, wherever.
That's on the city, right?
That's what it is. That's on this side.
My plan is to put a resolution in place that has maybe some arbitrary guidelines on how far distances you are from certain areas or these establishments.
Yes, sir.
My plan would be to have you provide us a business plan, so we know exactly what you're gonna do, and then when you step outside of that, we'll go pull your privilege license. That would be my plan. Now, my plan is not the council's plan, the council operates as a body, so if they kind of like my idea, I will put it on paper, and I'll put it on the agenda.
But my problem is, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful once again, Mr. Powell, that you, you provided no plan over the past thirty days.
But I'll, I'll speak in reference to that.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's, that's why we have a reading in place, you know, three readings.
Yes, sir.
Because we can evolve a plan, you know, over that process.
Yes, sir.
And so, I thought, you know, I, I like the, the ideas that Mr. Powell has presented, I think we do need to have some type of resolution guidelines, because we are kind of charting new territory.
Yes, sir.
And if we don't, you kind of put what the taxes are going to be, or what we're kind of collecting upfront.
Yes, sir.
And I think we will get lots of objections, you know, to everybody that comes after that, you know, or that's already in place, and so, we're now gonna implement a tax, as a way of, you know, you know, you've never said anything about that before, or if we do want to put in guidelines to say, you're going to establish, it needs to be, you know, five hundred feet from, you know, a church, or a school, or a, you know, you have those in place so that, that you, or anybody that follows you will say, oh, okay, I know what the rules are, and I'm going to accept those rules.
Yes, sir.
And so, I think, again, that's why we, again, have a, a three reading process, you know, it takes over, you know, three months to pass an ordinance, so that we can, when we come up to new territory, we can kind of devise a, a plan kind of in process and on the fly, you know, so that, again, like I said, none of us have encountered this before, because we're all trying to learn this, we go, and we are trying to do it, you know, in a responsible and ethical way, and these things don't need to be rushed, we need to be in a hurry, they need to take their time.
And that I do understand, and, and I don't think we're in a hurry, we've got thirty days to play. My plan is also, if you weren't clear on it, is to pass an ordinance installing a mixture of use tags. If you didn't understand, that takes three months.
I do understand, but it also takes three months of complete process.
My plan, this is just me, you're asking me, my plan would be to put it at the state max, and direct that money to the park director commission to use for youth activities.
And that sounds like a fantastic idea, that's what we.
That would be my plan, but that's not necessarily the council's plan, and I'm not gonna move forward unless that's what they want me to do. My plan would be to do all that, and whether at the end of that plan, I'm actually voting for the ordinance that allows you to go forward. That may or may not happen.
Yes, sir.
But my plan would be to put these plans in place, but I don't know, and.
Do you think we should have an ordinance on the tattoo parlor going forward?
I would have liked to have one.
Okay.
There, there are certain things that I think reflect the values of Greenwood. Now, you're, I think, what you think the values of Greenwood are a little different than what I think the values of Greenwood are.
Um, probably, maybe, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think they probably are.
Gotcha. I guess I would leave it at this, and I would, I really enjoy the dialogue. From an intellectual standpoint, I would thought I should be singled out, I mean, not regulating a tattoo parlor, which brings in all kinds of things. I come from big cities, I've lived in the city of Tulsa, private club, sports bars, at least if you're worried, if you're worried about something, worry about tattoo parlor. Statistically speaking, coming from big cities, you come from a big city, tattoo parlor are a bigger problem than a sports bar. That's where your drugs come in, and your, and your crime, and maybe not those guys in the street, I'm not saying that's who they are, I'm not saying that at all, I've actually walked in there myself, and talked to those guys, seemed like pretty nice cats. That's where your problems come in, not with the sports bar. You don't hear about the local drug bust at the sports bar, you hear about your local drug bust at the tattoo parlor, you'll hear your local problems at the sports bar, but you hear about this happening, and this happening, tattoo parlor, tattoo parlor, citizen is speaking. So, why should I be singled out when a tattoo parlor is allowed to conduct business that I'm in? You say you don't live in the fore, but unfortunately, when I'm moving forward, it takes three readings.
The tattoo parlor didn't make my permission to move forward. You're not being singled out.
I understand, but you've never spoken up since, since it's been, since your identity, and why haven't you spoken up since they've been here? I've never, since I've been here, I'm just listening to the council, you know, one time you mentioned the tattoo parlor, not once, and so, if, if you agree with that, and that's, that's your ideology, then, then, anyway, why don't you kept us safe since then?
Well, again, I'll, I'll speak up to saying, if you're not being singled out, you're the, you're the first one to, to come to this council, you know, wanting, seeking a private club.
Yes, sir.
And so, you would, I would suspect that you would expect.
Absolutely.
You know, objections, or not, you know, kind of a, a difficult road to, to get this, because it's gonna be the first, you know, in Greenwood.
Absolutely.
And so, that's all we're trying to do, is just trying to do this in a, in a responsible and ethical way.
Absolutely.
And it's not, we're being, picking on you anyway, it's just that you're the one that approached us to say, you wanted to do this, and so, now you need to be patient with us and your questions, and, you know, the process of trying to see it through.
And, and guys, we can take six months, I don't drink a beer, I don't, I don't drink liquor, okay, it takes six months. I had a chef fill my menu, I'm gonna have a successful, I have a successful restaurant without the liquor, okay? I'm here because the people want to be able to drink a beer with their Dallas Cowboys game, okay, and be able to enjoy it, that's why I'm here. From profits, imports, sure, I'm gonna make some money, absolutely. When I make some money, I plan to put on another business in Greenwood, and when I make money, come out and put up a few other business in Greenwood. And coming from a planning aspect, I own six different businesses, I'm very successful, I know how to plan, coming from the aspect of my waitress doesn't want wakers, they'll be wearing pants, long sleeve shirt, you'll catch hookers up to my establishment.
If I have my plan in the way, you'll have to write it down.
It's a hierarchy, he read this, he can't do, he's got a business plan out here, tells us what's going on. It's in your rock if you read this, he can't do, he's got his business plan out here, tells us what's going on.
I mean, it's... Bro, I appreciate guys like you, and, and I honestly do. And please don't take my tone the wrong way, that's just how I talk, okay? Guys like you are important, okay? With that being said, I promise you, man, I'm not bringing anything here that, that's going to hurt my community. I have an eleven year old and a fifteen year old to go to school district here. And they're pretending to go to school district here. I'm not here to, to remember anybody's share of, I'm here to strengthen, to build up the town that we live in. The facts are with us, you know, hypothetically, there will be twenty-four thousand people in ten years. We've got to have successful businessmen, men and women with a mind frame that are not afraid to open up a business. I've got to be honest with you, I don't know anybody from this community that would have done this. But I am not afraid. I am not scared. I am a trailblazer, I will set the standard.
Well, I agree with Lance, whether if it was you, it would be somebody else.
Yes, sir.
So if it doesn't happen now, it might happen in the future. What I want to do is just make sure it's regulated, planned out in detail. Whether it happens now or not.
And I think we have plenty of time to do so. I'm not sure exactly how long it takes to, to do the tax deal and do this deal. I have, I have no issue of voting for it tonight and saying, listen, we're not actually going to give you permission to apply until February eighteen. And that doesn't bother me. It didn't bother me having a tax, a tax to the, to the roof. I believe we need more things here for our community. I was driving up my ex-wife's house, the road was one lane and I had to pull over onto the grass in somebody's yard and I got sick in my stomach. I'm like, why don't we have two lanes here? I mean, it's unsafe for my children if they were walking.